So I'm calling this school board meeting to order and it is Monday, September 24th, 2018. It's 7:15 and at this time, I believe all board members are present except for Betty Davis. And if we could have the flag salute by Ms. Snelling, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have our student representative joining us and Emily, I'm going to, before you read that statement, why don't you just give us an introduction to who you are?
Hi, I'm Emily Hickox. I live in Girdwood and I go to South Anchorage High School. This year, I'm a sophomore and I am the student representative to the school board.
Thank you. And now, if you'll go ahead and read that opening statement, we'd appreciate that.
We want to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, and school business partners and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you're unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. At this time, approval of agenda and do I have anybody that would second that approval?
Second.
Okay, and at this time, I would like to make a change and insert a special announcement after the approval of agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Our announcement this evening is that we have received Betty Davis's resignation. She has submitted that based on her health and that she'd like to spend more time with her family and we certainly will miss her. She's been a intricate, 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 intricate part of this board and she has done so many wonderful things, not only on the school board but throughout our community and state. And we will, I think it's fair to say that we are going to have something October the 22nd that will be honoring Betty at our school board meeting. And so I would encourage Betty's friends and anyone that's interested that would like to celebrate her service with us to join us that evening. Thank you. Well, if you'd like to stand for Betty and maybe just clap and recognize her even though she's not here tonight. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to read a statement before a public testimony and put my glasses on. The board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns and informs our decision-making process. We have a table in front and center with two seats, seats and microphones available for testimony. When I call your name, you can take a seat and you have three minutes to testify and you'll see to the side screen there when your minutes start and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing views. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. I'd also like to add to this that I think that we're all adults here and that we can act in a respectful and professional manner. And so when I ask for no clapping, I certainly hope that you'll respect the wishes of the board and the reasons why we ask for this and that in your testimony, you can do this in a professional and respectful way. Thank you. And our first speaker is Robin, is it Wald? Okay, and Robin, if you'd come up, take a seat and then Jennifer Cooter. Did I say that right? Okay, if you, okay, if you take the other seat, please. Thank you.
And Robin, when you see, there you go. Thank you, Dr. Bishop and the school board members for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Robin Wald and this is my 10th year teaching in the Anchorage School District. I've taught kindergarten, first, and second grade and this year, I'm teaching third. A couple of weeks ago, we were looking at writer's craft, how authors use interesting words to make the interesting words and write the way they talk in order to make their writing more interesting. We went back through the text, found examples, and created a list. We had a little extra time, so I had them write down how they felt about school using their own voice, which tied in well with the story we were reading. When I later looked through the writing, I saw the typical responses I was expecting. I like recess and lunch, gym is awesome, or my teacher is super nice and gives us Jolly Ranchers. But there was one that broke my teacher heart. One of my kiddos, who has never been in school before this year, wrote, "If there is one word to describe school, it's, quote, 'useful.'" She then drew a picture of students sitting at desks, taking a test labeled elementary test and college test. So far this year, my kiddos have taken a beginning-of-year math test, unit math test, spelling test, map test, and weekly exit tickets, which are basically mini tests. While I love data and use it to inform my instruction, there has to be a better way of getting the information without our kiddos feeling like the only thing they do is tests. We need to minimize testing so that our kiddos learn to love learning and school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Philip Walters. Philip, if you could come up front, please. And Jennifer, you can begin when you see.
I have been at school board meetings and I have read Dr. Bishop's letter on the selection of the new reading curriculum and I feel the need as a member of that committee to share my experiences. Dr. Bishop has misrepresented the selection process in many ways. When we started, we were given small samples of three curriculums. I know of at least 10 other curriculums out there, but we were not allowed to explore those. As a group of two teachers at each grade level, we were given one curriculum to vet. So while there were 68 of us, only about a third of us actually reviewed the Reach for Reading curriculum. And I use the word curriculum loosely because we only had a small portion to look at. There were jits, bits, and pieces. We continually asked to see more of the curriculum. We're told they were not available. We were given specific parameters for which to do our review. We were looking at what the district originally called non-negotiables. And let me explain. Prior to looking at the curriculum, we were given professional development where we learned one way to assess the riggerness of a reading curriculum in terms of the common core standards. There were four components. Was there 60% nonfiction to 40% fiction? Was the writing directly connected to the text and require in-depth responses? Was there the presence of text-dependent higher-level questions? And as a primary team, the teaching assessment of foundational skills. At that training, we were told they were non-negotiable. If the curriculum didn't have them, we wouldn't select it. We wanted high-quality and rigorous curriculum. We'll jump ahead to reviewing the materials. None of the three met those non-negotiables. And then we were told, oh, that's okay. Nobody meets them all. We're just trying to get as close as we can. We had already lowered our standards and lost much of the rigor we were striving for. My group was not selected to review the Reach for Reading program. We had a different one and I honestly can't remember because it was really bad. And we quickly realized it would not meet the criteria for our district and the needs of our students. And because of this, we actually finished early and did have a chance to look at the Reach for Reading. The Reach for Reading in first grade did not meet the non-negotiable standards and we shared that with the administration. The writing was basic and did not connect to the text. We were also unsure about the ratio of nonfiction because most books were not available and we just had to take the company's words on which ones were fiction and nonfiction. During this two-day process, we were never given the chance to look at the curriculum as a teacher. What does a day look like? How do the skills progress? And most importantly, we were not given the opportunity to pilot any of this with students. We couldn't see how the curriculum worked in a classroom. In the end, based on the small sample we were allowed to look at, Reach for Reading did seem the best of the three. It wasn't perfect. It didn't meet the non-negotiables, but it was better than the other two. I was wary but hopeful that this curriculum would provide the change we needed. Unfortunately, our concerns were realized when the teachers actually taught the program. The lack of non-negotiables were amplified and many more flaws came to light. We keep saying that 68 teachers were on the committee, but it would be more accurate to state that some of the committee reviewed Reach for Reading. And it should also be stated, the committee shared concerns about both the program, the selection process, and the lack of piloting, but those concerns were ignored and the program was purchased anyways. Thank you.
And you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for not clapping. I'm just going to tell you. The next person is Crystal Whitney. Crystal, if you'd come up and Philip, if, whoops, go ahead. We'll give you a little time.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Philip Walters, a band teacher at Begich Middle School. Before that, I was at Bartlett High School. I have a bachelor's degree in music education, a master's in wind band conducting, and in my 14th year of teaching, all in the Anchorage School District, all in northeast Anchorage. I mentioned my advance
...school district and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, and school business partners and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live screen stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
At this time, approval of agenda, and do I have anybody that would second that approval?
Second.
Okay, and at this time, I would like to make a change and insert a special announcement after the approval of agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Our announcement this evening is that we have received Betty Davis's resignation. She has submitted that based on her health and that she'd like to spend more time with her family, and we certainly will miss her. She's been a intricate, can't talk, intricate part of this board, and she has done so many wonderful things, not only on the school board, but throughout our community and state. And we will, I think it's fair to say, that we are going to have something October the 22nd that will be honoring Betty at our school board meeting. And so I would encourage Betty's friends and anyone that's interested that would like to celebrate her service with us to join us that evening. Thank you. Well, if you'd like to stand for Betty and maybe just clap and recognize her even though Thank you. At this time, I'm going to read a statement before a public testimony and put my glasses on. The board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table in front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony. When I call your name, you can take a seat, and you have three minutes to testify, and you'll see to the side screen there when your minutes start and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing views. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. I'd also like to add to this that I think that we're all adults here and that we can act in a respectful and professional manner. And so when I ask for no clapping, I certainly hope that you'll respect the wishes of the board and the reasons why we asked for this, and that in your testimony, you can do this in a professional and respectful way. And our first speaker is Robin, is it Wald? Okay, and Robin, if you'd come up, take a seat, and then Jennifer Cooter. Did I say that right? Okay, if you, okay, if you take the other seat, please. Thank you. And Robin, when you see, there you go.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and the school board members for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Robin Wald, and this is my 10th year teaching in the Anchorage School District. I've taught kindergarten, first, and second grade, and this year I'm teaching third. A couple of weeks ago, we were looking at writer's craft, how authors use interesting words to make the interesting words and write the way they talk in order to make their writing more interesting. We went back through the text, found examples, and created a list. We had a little extra time, so I had them write down how they felt about school using their own voice, which tied in well with the story we were reading. When I later looked through the writing, I saw the typical responses I was expecting. I liked recess and lunch, gym is awesome, or my teacher is super nice and gives us Jolly Ranchers. But there was one that broke my teacher heart. One of my kiddos, who has never been in school before this year, wrote, "If there is one word to describe school, it's, quote, 'useful.'" She then drew a picture of students sitting at desks, taking a test labeled elementary test and college test. So far this year, my kiddos have taken a beginning-of-year math test, unit math test, spelling test, map test, and weekly exit tickets, which are basically mini tests. While I love data and use it to inform my instruction, there has to be a better way of getting the information without our kiddos feeling like the only thing they do is tests. We need to minimize testing so that our kiddos learn to love learning and school.
Our next speaker is Philip Walters. Philip, if you could come up front, please. And Jennifer, you can begin when you see.
I have been at school board meetings, and I have read Dr. Bishop's letter on the selection of the new reading curriculum, and I feel the need as a member of that committee to share my experiences. Dr. Bishop has misrepresented the selection process in many ways. When we started, we were given small samples of three curriculums. I know of at least 10 other curriculums out there, but we were not allowed to explore those. As a group of two teachers at each grade level, we were given one curriculum to vet. So while there were 68 of us, only about a third of us actually reviewed the Reach for Reading curriculum. And I use the word curriculum loosely, because we only had a small portion to look at. There were jits, bits, and pieces. We continually asked to see more of the curriculum. We're told they were not available. We were given specific parameters for which to do our review. We were looking at what the district originally called non-negotiables. And let me explain. Prior to looking at the curriculum, we were given professional development, where we learned one way to assess the rigoriness of a reading curriculum in terms of the common core standards. There were four components. Was there 60% nonfiction to 40% fiction? Was the writing directly connected to the text and require in-depth responses? Was there the presence of text-dependent higher-level questions? And as a primary team, the teaching assessment of foundational skills. At that training, we were told they were non-negotiable. If the curriculum didn't have them, we wouldn't select it. We wanted high-quality and rigorous curriculum. We'll jump ahead to reviewing the materials. None of the three met those non-negotiables. And then we were told, oh, that's okay. Nobody meets them all. We're just trying to get as close as we can. We had already lowered our standards and lost much of the rigor we were striving for. My group was not selected to review the Reach for Reading program. We had a different one, and I honestly can't remember because it was really bad. And we quickly realized it would not meet the criteria for our district and the needs of our students. And because of this, we actually finished early and did have a chance to look at the Reach for Reading. The Reach for Reading in first grade did not meet the non-negotiable standards, and we shared that with the administration. The writing was basic and did not connect to the text. We were also unsure about the ratio of nonfiction, because most books were not available, and we just had to take the company's words on which ones were fiction and nonfiction. During this two-day process, we were never given the chance to look at the curriculum as a teacher. What does a day look like? How do the skills progress? And most importantly, we were not given the opportunity to pilot any of this with students. We couldn't see how the curriculum worked in a classroom. In the end, based on the small sample we were allowed to look at, Reach for Reading did seem the best of the three. It wasn't perfect. It didn't meet the non-negotiables, but it was better than the other two. I was wary but hopeful that this curriculum would provide the change we needed. Unfortunately, our concerns were realized when the teachers actually taught the program. The lack of non-negotiables were amplified, and many more flaws came to light. We keep saying that 68 teachers were on the committee, but it would be more accurate to state that some of the committee reviewed Reach for Reading. And it should also be stated, the committee shared concerns about both the program, the selection process, and the lack of piloting, but those concerns were ignored, and the program was purchased anyways. Thank you.
And you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for not clapping. Just going to tell you. The next person is Crystal Whitney. Crystal, if you'd come up, and Philip, if, whoops, go ahead. We'll give you a little time.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Philip Walters, a band teacher at Begich Middle School. Before that, I was at Bartlett High School. I have a bachelor's degree in music education, a master's in wind band conducting, and in my 14th year of teaching, all in the Anchorage School District, all in northeast Anchorage. I mention my advanced degrees in teaching experience because it seems that sometimes the experts in the rooms, the teachers in their classroom, are overlooked in favor of expensive consultants hawking shiny new programs from the Lower Forty-Eight. Many or most of those consultants, I would wager, have less specialized education and less experience in the classroom than many of the majority of teachers that you see in this room here tonight. Further, nobody knows our kids or families better than we do. I have been teaching the same population for literally my entire career. I'm currently working four jobs to make ends meet. Let that sink in. I'm in my 14th year of teaching in ASD, and the only way I can support my wife and two kids is to work four jobs. That said, being a single-income family has taught us a few things about budgeting. First, you save wherever possible. You fix things instead of buying new ones. You buy generic instead of name-brand. You wait as long as possible before spending, hoping that more income will come in or the price will drop. I read a comment on a daily news article recently that said, and I'm paraphrasing to make it polite, "The district is vastly underestimating how angry teachers are." Talk about an understatement. In open bargaining, we have heard again and again that the money just isn't there. Okay, fine, I get it. I'm in a similar boat. So trust your professionals in the classroom to fix things instead of buying new programs like Capturing Kids' Hearts and Lion's Quest to teach us how to teach our kids. Wait until you can give all of your employees a big fat raise instead of giving your juster administrators a 20% to 30% raise. Incidentally, my take-home pay this paycheck was $35 less than last year, so thanks. Am I saying that not spending that money could give you enough money for the reasonable 3% raise we've been asking? No. What I'm saying is that if you don't have enough money to go around, you spend it on bread. You spend it on meat. You spend it on milk. You don't spend it on candy, on ice cream, on marshmallow fluff. You spend it on those staples, those things that will allow your children to survive until things turn around. Your students are your children. Your teachers are your staples. ASD is spending their limited resources on marshmallow fluff. That is not good for kids, and that is why teachers are very angry. During the bargaining process, both sides are legally required to bargain in good faith. True confession time. I signed up to speak tonight because I'd heard people were getting called into the principal's offices simply because they'd signed up to testify. I wanted to see if somebody at the headshed really had the gall to pull that kind of stunt. They did. This was confirmed several times today. That is not acting in good faith, and that is why teachers are angry. I have friends who know that wearing a purple or red shirt at their school paints a target on their back. That is not acting in good faith, and that is why teachers are angry. I have friends who, on their personal social media pages, have posted facts about what they're being asked to do and teach in their classroom. Facts, not opinions, just facts, and encourage people to be more involved in the process. They've been called into the principal's offices. That is not acting in good faith, and that is why teachers are angry. You have a nationwide Red Fred movement happening in so many other states right now. Arizona got a 19% raise after a strike. Washington got a 13% raise after a strike. We are asking for much less than that, right now. Right now, we're asking.
David Neese? If you take the next seat. No, or did I miss? Oh, Megan Card, sorry. Megan Card. Sorry, David. And then Crystal, you can begin when you see the clock.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Whitney, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Creekside Park Elementary School. This is my fourth year teaching. My first three years were in kindergarten, and this year I had the privilege of looping with my class into first grade, the best opportunity I have ever been given as an educator. In the last four years, my class size has gone from 18 to 23 to 25 students. With 18 students, I was able to make individual connections with each student. Since my class size has grown, that ability has declined significantly. Having 25 students in a kindergarten classroom is overwhelming for even the most experienced teachers. Last year, my team asked to lower class sizes by adding a fourth teacher and were denied due to the overall school numbers. Class sizes continue to grow each year, even though the district has a student-to-teacher ratio. The only year I have met that ratio was my first year of teaching. This continues to negatively affect our student population. With growing class sizes, I've also been expected to learn three new curriculums: science, SEL, and Reach for Reading. Last year, I spent countless hours studying a manual that I received very minimal training on, trying to understand what to teach, how long to teach it, and when to teach it, so I could give the best learning experiences to my students. Creekside received practice sets and party plans in early December and began to implement them after winter break. I was able to do so due to the prior experience I had with ASLOC and our instructional coach of support. I still struggled significantly for all of it to make sense and to be confident enough to deliver a lesson to my students. Yes, it was tough, and yes, I did make it work. However, it required a lot of my personal time. The expectations the district has put on us of learning new curriculums, adding required lessons of when, and the constraints of the block, we are not able to complete everything within our contract time. To know the content and be ready for nonstop instruction, we have to work so many hours outside of our school day. This does not include grading, keeping data, making phone calls to parents, et cetera. There's so much more. There have been several testimonies about the 90/60/40/40 block scheduling and the question of how in the world is that going to work? It is tough. It is exhausting. It is overwhelming. I'm supposed to begin my language arts block right at 9:00 a.m. to teach 40 minutes of spelling, grammar, and writing. However, the pledging announcements for my school do not end until at least 9:10. My students lose at least 10 minutes of instructional time a day. Multiply that by five days, and my students are losing 50 minutes of language arts instruction a week. Not to mention that my students who receive speech services are only allowed to be pulled during the language arts block. Therefore, they are missing at least 60 minutes of instruction time a week, not to include the missed time from announcements. I'm required to provide my students writing and spelling grades on a weekly basis, but my students with speech IEPs are not receiving adequate instruction for these areas due to them being pulled during this time. We have a win block that stands for what I need scheduled into our day. These students need speech services to be able to engage with their peers, become better readers, and to become better writers. A solution for this could be students are pulled during their win time, because that is what they need to be a successful learner. Children deserve to be heard. I cannot fulfill this due to the demanding needs of my new block scheduling and the number of students that are in my classroom. Due to the cutbacks of budgets and forced spending habits of the district, larger class sizes, along with the restraints of the block scheduling, make it impossible to meet students' needs or allow for any challenges that are guaranteed to show up. We know students are not a one-size-fits-all. We continue to say our goal is to do what's best for kids. However, the current situation, what I just explained to you, does not make what is best for kids.
Thank you. David Neese, if you would like to come forward now. And Megan, you can begin when the...
I'm Megan Card. I teach at Greening Middle School. It's my 11th year teaching, all 11 in middle school. I have a BA, a minor. I have dual endorsements, six HQTs, and I'm a 2017 BP Teacher of Excellence. I am concerned and heartbroken over the loss of middle school, but I am also very concerned about a lack of communication and a lack of response to issues staff and community members are bringing forward. Starting with middle school, we have a petition requesting the reinstatement of the middle school model. This petition gathered over 3,200 signatures and counting from local adults so far, but the school district seems to be ignoring it. Yet a petition with 5,000 signatures created a need for a whole study of new proposals on start times. So I would like to ask the board to take the issue of the loss of middle school and respond to the thousands who signed and the dozens of testimonies that have been given already. I wrote a two-page letter, which I will be submitting as an op-ed, to school board members, the superintendent, and the directors of HR and secondary ed. I got a single two-sentence response from board members. Teachers especially have almost no outlets for communication with district leadership. So then the only thing we have is a three-minute testimony here. And now we're told we can't clap, and the things that we say and aren't happening in our classrooms aren't? Wait! We are the ones with the kids, day in and day out. We know what we are being told to do. A lot of stuff looks great on paper. When teachers write lesson plans, we often come up with ideas that look fabulous on paper, at least mine do. Usually, they turn out well in reality, but sometimes what looks good on paper absolutely bombs in real life. Been there, done that. As a teacher, we know what we have to do, is we have reflection questions that we answer, and then we evaluate the success of our lesson. Occasionally, we have to realize that what we had planned and looked good on paper did not work. We use that feedback to decide whether we do some serious modifications or drop the lesson and don't try it again. But in ASD, leaders seem to miss that reflection and feedback. Rather than hearing teachers who are saying new programs are not working for their students or that we don't have time, given mandated programs, to provide the best educational environment that we know is right for our students, we're being brushed aside and told it's not true. Where is the feedback and evaluation? We now even have staff members being brought in for inquisitions for sharing their opinions and testimony or on the news. So it's okay to bully people for trying to communicate? I am appalled by this and hope the board will investigate this further. I would like to suggest that the school board add a teacher advisory committee to take a positive step toward allowing top-to-bottom communication and actual correct information for what is happening in classrooms. This advisory board would have at least one representative each for elementary, middle school, high school, charter, and special schools, and special education. We need to fix these communication issues as soon as possible. Teachers are frustrated, we're not empowered, and feel like we're getting our legs cut out from under us.
Tom Claymire? Then David, you can begin.
Okay. As a starter?
Yeah, there we go.
All right, so I'm the odd duck out again. Yay. 28 years, junior high, middle school. Looks like we're going back to junior high. If you're going to take the junior high model, please do it like it was when I signed on as a teacher. Make sure that you have the people teaching the courses. Make sure the courses match what the high school curriculum is. You can always go back to, you know, what my wife did in the district in the 60s. But what I came here for was Memo 40. It's going over the Alaska Association of School Boards. And one of the things that pops up in there is that when you look at that organization, which you voluntarily pay dues to as a member, you don't have to, it's not forced upon you, they have an agenda that's basically for the 34 schools that get one vote, because they have less than 500 children. You get five votes. You're the only district in the state that has more than 20,000 children in it, yet you have less votes than 34 schools that have less than 500 kids. So how are you going to get your agenda in? You're not. So, I mean, I don't know if it's the option. You could opt out of belonging to AASB. You really should take a long look at that, because the first item they've gone on there is opposition to mandated borough formation. You're in a mandated borough. You were mandated in 1963, along with the rest of the railboat, to form a borough or lose state funding. Cut, sorry, Ketchikan took that to the Supreme Court, and they said, yeah, legislature can make that happen. You belong to an organization that says, we don't care about the other people having to contribute their fair share. You voluntarily belong to that. You really need to take a look at that. And there are other agendas in there. Like I said, it's a perfect organization. If you had 500 or less kids in your school district, this would be the place to belong. But you've got 20,000 plus. I mean, back in 83, 20,000 was the max. You're up over 40,000, and you get five votes? What kind of crazy is that? So you have to take a look at organizations you belong to that are not serving your purpose. Council of Great Schools made recommendation to you guys. You've implemented almost every one of them, because they're big schools like you. This couple you could still work on, but I don't see any reason for ASD to belong to AASB. You're not going to get your voice. You're not going to get your agenda. You're not going to get what you need for our kids, because 34 500-or-less-population schools got a bigger voice than you do. By 30. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is, I can't read that. What is that?
Brienne Jensen?
Brienne Jensen. And Tom, you can begin when you see the clock.
Tom Claymire, AEA. It's a rare moment that I agree with David Neese, but in this case, one of the other things I notice about the AASB platform is that they are opposed to legislatively limiting class size. And so it's ironic to me that as an organization, the ASD has failed to attract and retain, do what it takes to attract and retain quality educators, which is mostly what I'm going to speak about tonight, but also belongs to an organization that is opposed to reducing class size legislatively. And we can't do it through bargaining either. So that kind of lets class size grow to whatever it is, and so we deserve what we get, I suppose. A couple of members have already brought up the reminder that I was going to make. I contacted the superintendent this weekend, and she assured me she was going to address the issue of the intimidation and harassment for members who are testifying either through public means or signing up for testimony, being called in by their principal for supposedly fact-finding missions. And of course, that's against Board Regulation 4000 and against Alaska statute as well. And she assured me she's going to take care of that. So I appreciate that. As of today, we have 82 openings for certificated staff on the books, and we're in, what, seventh, eighth week of school. We have eight certificated members that have already left employment since the beginning of the year, three of them being teachers or educators that were hired this year. We have several positions in the district being filled by long-term subs, and some of those long-term subs are not certificated personnel because of emergency situations where we can't find even qualified subs to be in those positions. So it's clear that we have attraction and retention issues. The district presented information last year in the school board meeting, which I testified to rebut, and then it reappeared in bargaining and is now posted on the website about compensation and those sorts of things. And so I've provided a packet for you with some additional information to consider. One, an article from Forbes magazine, so it's not like teachers are making this up about the respect for employees, empowering your employees, and what a difference that makes in getting a job done. The rest are more financial in nature, and I won't go over every single one of them. They've been sent out to members. I've sent them to you during the break and with summaries of each of these, but essentially independent data demonstrating that Anchorage teachers are underpaid, the comparison to the CPI showing that our wages are stagnant, that in the state of Alaska, when taking into account the cost of living, we're 29th as a state. Comparing to the other five big districts, we lag behind in both compensation and in benefits. And if you compare, in particular, our health benefits to other municipal employees, we are clearly the bastard stepchild there. And so what we're asking for in our proposal is clearly data-informed, data-supported, and necessary to attract and retain. And so I thank you very much. I'd ask that you post this alongside the other data that's on the public website, so that there's some balance there, or take the other stuff down as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Nancy Neal. And Brienne, you can begin when you see the clock.
My name is Brienne, and I have four children under the age of eight. I have a degree in teaching, but when I became a mother, I chose to take care of my kids full-time. Being a full-time mother has been the hardest thing I have ever done. When my oldest child was a toddler, he would get angry and violent. I sought out help from multiple parenting books. I would read what these experts had to say, and they would promise me that their technique worked with all children. I did exactly what they said, because more than anything, I wanted my child's behavior to improve. But despite my good intentions, there was no change in my son. I kept trying, book after book, thinking I just hadn't found the right one. Finally, I put the books away. I started observing my son. I tried new things that came to my mind as I reflected on my interactions with him. These new strategies were not from a scripted program, but were determined by my past experiences with my son. I finally began to notice a change in him. He went from being a child full of explosive anger to a model child, like an angel. Those who know him always comment on what an amazing, mature, thoughtful, kind, and obedient kid he is. From this experience, I learned that I had to treat and see my child as an individual. When I treated him like a statistic from my parenting books, his behavior actually grew worse. When I started to treat him as my son, unique in every way, his behavior finally improved. I grew up in the Anchorage School District and felt like I received a great education. Recently, for the first time, my husband and I discussed the possibility of leaving Alaska because we no longer have confidence in the leaders of this district. I have watched the school board meetings over the internet, and I am concerned that teachers are trying to bring important issues to your attention, and they are being ignored. The teachers that have come here to testify are some of the best in our district. Instead of being listened to, they have been pressured to keep silent. Instead of being listened to, they have been pressured to keep silent. One of my biggest concerns is the exodus of good teachers leaving our district because they don't want to work in this district any longer. Some good teachers have chosen to stay, but I feel that they are micromanaged to the point of not being able to teach effectively. It's the great teachers of Alaska that made a difference in my life growing up. I'm afraid there won't be any left for my children. Please, let our teachers fly. Lift them up by trusting that in getting a degree in education, that they do in fact know about teaching. Teachers are like me and my son. I've seen students treated as a number and find the equivalent of my parenting strategy books and expensive school programs to try and fix them. That is not what they need. Like my son, these methods can actually make their performance worse. Keeping great teachers are what we need to fix the problems you see. I know more about my son than anyone else because I spend time with him day after day. Teachers spend time with individual, unique students day after day. Let's trust them that they know how to make each individual succeed. Let us not get distracted by flashy ideas of start times, school schedules, and fancy programs. Let us get back to teachers and students.
Thank you. Uh, Steve Porcella?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Neal. I've lived in Anchorage, Alaska for thirty-five years. I have two sons who went through the Anchorage School District. I have one grandson at CLAT. I have one who will be starting next year. He's a very precocious, uh, preschooler right now. And I'm here to address a few issues. I don't have a script, so I'm just here. Um, first of all, I would like to, I love the way this group is engaged. I would like to see a little bit more engagement over here. You guys are listening, and I really appreciate that. As a teacher, I've been teaching nineteen years. I teach middle school. I actually have taught K through twenty-two-year-olds. I've also taught at McLaughlin, so I have a huge range of experience. At the current junior high model, we no longer have a middle school model. We lack the planning period to work, so that we can work with our students. Um, this is kind of a misnomer for the public. It's important that they are aware that we are no longer doing the middle school model. Uh, we don't have the planning time with regard to that. We, I, I had to miss my per-contract planning time because lack of, um, substitute teachers. Uh, the teachers, the science teachers at Hanshu Middle School lost, uh, out of fourteen days, nine teachers lost their personal planning time because we did not have adequate substitutes to cover. They were asked to cover, and they did, but these teachers need their planning time. I'm also here to address the start time. I, uh, coach high school tennis. I have dealt with high schoolers, just, I just ended up the tennis team. I have talked to them, I have talked to many parents, and I think we need to spend a little bit more time on this decision. Anchorage is a very diverse community. Many of people, uh, parents in the community have multiple jobs. I think that just willy-nilly changing the start time is, will be detrimental to the families in Anchorage. Uh, we have some people who have worked two or three jobs, and that could be very, that could not be a good thing. I think we need to think about the families and the kids. As far as the bullying that I've heard, I, I am, I find it to be abhorrent that a principal will call in a teacher regarding whether they're testifying. I stand up for what's right, I'm very involved, and I would be so disappointed in the administrator at my school if they did that. We have Lions Quest, we were supposedly one of the best schools in the district for SEL, Social Emotional Learning. I believe that that is, it is reprehensible that a principal would do this. That is bullying in the first degree. I really hope that this will stop. Thank you so much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Our next, uh, person is, is it Katie?
Justice.
Justice. Okay. And Steve, uh, you can begin when you see the clock.
My name is Steve. I devoted my life to the Anchorage School District. I taught and coached for thirty-nine years, and I currently substitute to help fellow work, coworkers as needed. I subbed all last week. I am here to ask you tonight, what are you doing? The number of programs and changes that have been implemented in the last couple of years are staggering. Any scientist knows that if you change multiple variables at once, there is no way to know which variables are successful and which are not. As a school board, you have changed schedules, programs, testing, and now start times. As a substitute and former teacher, I hear a lot of feedback from teachers. They are angry. How many of you would like to be willing to work without a contract? Teachers are asked to do this year after year. It sends the wrong message to your employees. Cut your own salaries. Stop paying for useless programs like the Danielson training I was required to implement. Cut back on administrative personnel in the education center. Teachers are stretched too thin. It's time for each of you to do more with less. Instead of hiring more PR people, you should be cutting back. Teachers don't get to hire PR people when they are faced with difficult parents or administrators. They're having to do more with less, so should you. Some of your ideas are just plain stupid. I taught the, at the middle school level for many years. Now they have been mandated to teach in advisory period. With all that worry about academics and low test scores, you mandate a class with no outcomes or curriculum defined. Really, ask the teachers, ask the students, they all say it's a waste of time. Perhaps the greatest waste of time is your standardized tests. Students have testing fatigue. You mandate so much testing that teachers don't have time to teach. At a funeral last week, a friend that lives in Wasilla said she felt sorry for our district, that she had been seeing the steamrolling approach of our current superintendent and the disastrous effect it had in the valley. She did say that she was sorry that we were now dealing with the same problem. Leadership that dictates rather than listens to input from others. School board members, you are our only hope. The biggest mistake you made was not keeping Ed Graff, who listened to teachers and cost the district, a lot less than salary and talent search money. Please, listen to these teachers who come and testify each week. They are the best this school has us, has to offer. They are the passionate educators that care about students. Your failure to listen to their concerns sends the message that you don't value them. As a substitute in the various schools in the district, I hear the same thing over and over. Teachers want a fair contract, less testing and more time to teach, a return to the middle school model, more say in what goes on in the classroom, fewer mandated programs, and a superintendent and school board that is responsive to their concerns. Thank you. By the way, as a substitute, don't count on me to cross the picket line in the event of a strike. I won't do it. I also attended the last start time town hall meeting. Nobody wants to change start times. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ally Paskin? If it gets where you guys can hear me, let me know, and I'll let somebody else talk.
My name is Katie Justice, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Mount Spur Elementary School. I'm here today to represent some of my colleagues because they don't have the time or the energy to come. I do not have a new curriculum, a combo class are huge numbers. I only have twenty-six students right now compared to the thirty-eight I had a few years ago. My fellow teachers who teach combo classes were told in trainings before school started by your experts that you can't teach two grade levels with a new reading curriculum during the ninety-minute reading block, yes, that's what they were asked to do at the beginning of the year. Now they teach only one grade level for the reading block, but they're still expected to figure out how to combine grade levels with the language arts block. This is not a problem limited to our school. There are combo classes all over the district struggling with this. You should have figured out how a combo class teacher can combine curriculums before the school year started. This problem should not be a surprise to you, but apparently it is. Dr. Bishop, you told us you hired the people you needed to hire and had to pay them more to get who you needed. What are they doing? Obviously not figuring out how to solve problems that are being faced daily in the classroom. Second, we've been told that we have a schedule, our schedule lasts twenty minutes a day to teach science or social studies, and I'm expected to give a grade in those subjects weekly. Unfortunately, my daily twenty minutes has been divided into five minutes here, four minutes here, nine minutes there. This, uh, um, I've been told I have to give two grades for the same assignment, but should I give a science grade when we read a science-related story even if it's not my standards? Or do I teach the standards for my grade, or do I just give a grade for any science or social studies-related item that we happen to read? Um, I am now using my time, my little five and six-minute blocks, to go to the bathroom without interrupting or missing instruction, or to stand up and stretch. What happened to our fifty-four minutes of physical education, our exercise a day? Recession's twenty-five minutes and usually less by the time they get outside and before they line up to eat. We do have PE, but only two days a week. I'm challenging all of you who sit before me to spend an entire day in the classroom. Don't come in just to say hi or for a picture opportunity. Come in when teachers come in and walk through a day with us. You're welcome to come to my room, but you'll have a better understanding of what this block schedule and rigid curriculums have created in the classroom by visiting a kindergarten through fifth-grade classroom. Remember, the challenge is for you to spend an entire day in our classroom. Thank you.
Helps if I turn it on. Madison, uh, is it Deval or Deval? Madison? Okay, Ally, you can begin when you see the clock.
Good evening. My name is Ally Paskin, and I am gonna be wearing two hats when I speak tonight. My first hat is as a parent. I am a parent of a Mount Spur Elementary School student. She is actually my second student to go through school there. Um, unusually, I have, this is my seventh year having a student at Mount Spur. As a military family, that's almost unheard of. And I think it puts me in a really excellent position to tell you about why Mount Spur should stay open. Mount Spur is a very special school. I will say that it is right outside my back door, and I'm very lucky to have my neighborhood school in my backyard and be a part of a community that appreciates having that really old-fashioned neighborhood school feeling, where every teacher really does know every child. The principal knows every student, not just the frequent fires that come into the office. And that sense of community that we have at that school really cannot be beat. And I really urge the board, who I know just found out about this today, to really keep in mind, our military students need Mount Spur. The other hat that I'm gonna put on is as an ASD employee with being secretary at Mount Spur. It's, it's a very easy commute for me to get from my house to, right across the street to the school. Mount Spur, it, the sense that you get when you walk into that school is that you are home. I started off as just a parent, then I became a PTA member and board member, and then I became an employee. So obviously, Mount Spur is very close to my heart. And one thing that I'd like to say, um, Dr. Bishop, um, at the end of the working group meeting, you were honoring special people, students and staff, and as you said, what makes ASD great? It is the students and the teachers. And I will say that Mount Spur really has teachers and staff and students worth recognizing and worth saving, and so I really am asking you to please keep Mount Spur open. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have, is it Bryce Porcella? Okay. Oh, hi Bryce. Um, so Madison, you can begin when you see the, the clock there.
My name is Maddie, and I go to Polaris, and my mom is a hard-working teacher. Teachers should have a fair contract and fair wage because dedicated teachers work too much. I want to spend more time with my mom. I wish I could go to the zoo or the movies with my mom, but we either don't have enough money, or she's too tired from spending hours late at night working on grades and activity for her students. I think school is hard. Imagine what teachers go through. My name is Madison Deval, and I think that teachers deserve a fair contract and fair wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Okay, I'll let that pass. Um, is it Brad Kerr? Isn't that right, Brad? Beer, Kirk, here, sorry. I can't talk and I can't read. Um, okay, time's, time's up there, Bryce.
Oh, okay. Um, it's kinda hard to start, uh, honestly, um, you know, because I, I have a lot of things that I, I would like to say. Um, but as I've noticed, or as I've been attending school board meetings and, uh, listening to public testimony and educator testimony, sometimes I wonder if I'm just sitting here and just taking my three minutes in silence and then just walking back to my chair, it may have the same effect. Um, as I've seen public testimony and I've seen, um, teachers testify, um, I don't see much follow-up in, uh, following meetings regarding what, uh, teachers are, are bringing to you as concerns, or what the public is bringing to you as concerns. Instead, what I see is I read in the paper, and I also see in other places where, um, the board and, um, uh, the school district, um, is telling teachers that, um, what they have is, is not of legitimate concern. Um, kinda some of those things have been, uh, testified, uh, to today. Uh, we don't get that validation. In fact, all we get is a dismissal, and that's very, very frustrating. Anyhow, what I'd like to talk about today is a little bit about MAPS scores. When MAPS scores were first rolled out to the Anchorage School District at the middle school about three or four years ago, I had a, um, uh, faculty meeting where I was, um, listening to the, uh, the issues of MAPS scores, and I, I raised my hand and I said, "Am I to understand that MAPS scores are to be the sole indicator that will be used to place kids into various curriculum?" And I was told, "No, that's not the case, it's only one of many tools that will be used." It was told it to be just a dipstick and that that wouldn't be the case. Um, last May, I testified about the amount of testing that was done to our students. Our middle schoolers are taking ten-plus standardized tests a year. Why? Um, last week, the statement was made, "There is no interest in raising test scores." Well, I'm left with the impression that they'd, um, that they, uh, or I left with the impression at their last, um, last meeting that, um, we do care more about students, but not about the data. Um, I beg to differ. Uh, where are the priorities? A week into the school year, I identified a struggling student in one of my classes. She needed help, then she got sick. Then two days later, uh, the two days that, rather she was sick just happened to be the same days as MAPS testing. When she came back, she was pulled from the, her instructional classes to make up the test. She is a struggling student and missed-
Bryce, Bryce, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your microphone is cutting in and off. Um, I don't know if you wanna switch, and we'll give him a little bit more extra time, but until we can get that one going.
All right, I'm gonna sit closer to you, Brad.
So, sorry about that.
Okay. Um, so, when she came back, uh, she was pulled from her instructional classes to make up the test. Uh, she's a struggling student, and in total, she missed three additional days of my class. So, I'm sorry, in total, she missed five days of instruction. The following is an email I received from her mother, and I'm using a, an alias here, but she said, I said, her mother said, "I spoke with Susan today, and she said she is really enjoying the class and the content being covered, but wishes I wasn't, quote, I would, but, quote, wishes I wasn't so far behind." Last week in a staff meeting, we were, for, well, also on a side note, we had thirty-one students pulled out of their classes, out of their regular instructional time, to make up MAPS tests. Those two fell behind. Um, so last week in a staff meeting, we were kind of informed to expect student schedules to change, and that there'd be some movement between classes. And the reason that was given was due to MAPS scores. So my solution is rather simple. I think it's the less, same solution I proposed back in May. We don't need all this testing. When I was a school, in school, we had the Iowa test. That was it. That was the dipstick that let us know where we were at and where parents were at, and that was sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Frida? Did I say that right? Okay, thank you. And you can begin when you see the clock there, Brad.
Hi, uh, I, as well as Nancy, don't really have a script to go off of tonight. Uh, kinda just wanted to talk on what some of my colleagues and other, um, public testimony had spoke on. Um, I have been either in attendance at school board meetings or, uh, watching from afar online, and I really wanna know, like Bryce had mentioned, I was thinking about just coming up here and sitting here for three minutes and saying, "Thank you." That was gonna be my first, uh, first plan, but, um, hopefully this will have a little bit better effect, 'cause I feel like, um, as some of the other folks that testified tonight, I think you may have noticed, as well as I did, a real edge in people's voices, and those are angry people, right? And they're angry for a reason. It's because we don't feel like we're being listened to. And so I looked up online, um, 'cause I was curious, uh, what is actually the responsibility of our school board, who I work for? And it says here, there's, uh, four clear responsibilities. One, set a clear direction for the district. Two, empower and hold accountable the superintendent for implementing our direction- Two, empower and hold accountable the superintendent for implementing our direction and managing district operations. Three, develop and adopt policies and budgets that support and implement the board's direction. And four, model the professionalism and degree of effort they expect from students, families and staff. So I was curious, okay, in that, I hear a lot about, all right, we're going to hold accountable the superintendent for implementing our direction. To me, that means that the school board oversees the superintendent. So then I looked up the superintendent's responsibilities, and I couldn't find, per se, maybe it was there, but I couldn't see it, but I did find a, from the desk of the superintendent, so something superintendent writes. And it says here that "The Anchorage School Board and Administration are committed to providing an open learning environment where students and employees feel safe, cared for, and that they belong." I just feel like we're supposed to be a team. Superintendent's even wearing red. I don't know if that was a PR move tonight, that we're supporting our teachers, but I'd really like to see the school board and the superintendent listening to teachers, getting into classrooms, not just pushing an agenda. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. I think we have one more. Michelle Burquist. And Frida, you can begin when you see the clock.
I spoke in my language, which is a language of Alaska, and I belong to a parent advocacy group for native students, CITC's ARISE. And over the course of the year, we've spoken to different groups. One of the groups we spoke to was a representative from the Department of Early Development, who told us that one of the state's highest priorities is that students feel safe and included. And our native children and students in ASD are not included because their language is not included. At a Title VI meeting, Native Advisory Council, ARISE was there, and we had a grandparent testify. She said that when she was a young child, she went to, her family moved to the village. It's a very sad story. Her family moved to the village, and she went to school for the first time, and she got sent to the corner. She didn't realize it was because she was doing something normal, speaking in her own She stood in the corner for four hours, and during that whole time, she had a book on her head. Education took our language away, and education should help us get it back.
Thank you. And Michelle, you can begin when you see the clock start over.
Okay, I am a parent of a student in the ASD school district. I had the opportunity to attend one of the potential school start times, open house. I went to the one that was scheduled September 13th. Unfortunately, it was scheduled on a day that there were many events going on in Eagle River. I'm wondering if that was convenient or not, but a lot of people didn't get to attend. They had the cross-country running at Eagle River High School, and parents had Birchwood Open House. So a lot of parents didn't get to go. So when I left there, there were still many unanswered questions that no one was able to give me anything. When the presentation got started, it was totally geared around telling us that this is what was going to happen. They gave a lot of statistics about students getting more sleep, how important it was, that the only reason that the times are changing is because of the high schoolers. I had to laugh. Is this a joke? The high schoolers need more sleep? It's so important for them to have more sleep, so let's change the entire schedule for them to sleep 30 minutes. 30 minutes. You're asking parents to buy into a drastic change for them and their middle schoolers, oh, I'm sorry, junior highs, schoolers. So you can give high schoolers 30 more minutes. High schoolers that I have talked to said that they wouldn't want more time or their time to change at all. They would just stay up later. We did Project Citizen at our school. You know what I found out? Asking every one of the students who wanted the times changed, what they do at night to stay up late. You know what it was? Phones. Phones. It doesn't matter if you change the time and you give them 30 more minutes. I have structure at my house. If my daughter stays up till 11 or 12 o'clock at night to do her homework, I am fine with that, because that's what she needs to do to get through the day. Get her homework done, because it's important to her. And she does sports. There was other high school students that were there. They wouldn't be able to work their jobs. One student, at 2:15, has to be at Three Bears. And then he has another job after that, and I'm pretty sure he is not the only student who has to work to help out with his family. By changing the time, which again, was geared around high schoolers, you have elementary starting 15 minutes earlier. I was told that parents were complaining about them having to be in the dark. Oh, my gosh. My daughter, in elementary school, went to the bus every morning when it was dark. That's Alaska. Sorry, that's how our times are. You don't want to have your child go to school in the dark? Move to another state. My daughter had to wait, again, like I said. So changing it 15 minutes isn't going to change anything at all. Then, of course, let's talk about middle school, I mean, junior high. Starting at 9:30 and off at 4:00, I'm truly confused. These times were not suggested. The cost of busing, scheduling busing, I'm noticing that a lot of changes that have been made to do with testing scores. Are these times being changed because someone thinks that the scores are going to increase because they get 30 minutes of sleep?
I'm sorry, can I get you to wrap up, please?
Oh, yeah, I've got a lot to say. Please, vote no on changing the school times. This is a financial imposition for parents and children. This affects the entire community. There is not enough data given to us to see that it warrants to be changed. So please, every board member got an email from me. Please read it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to superintendent update, and Dr. Bishop, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. I'm going to provide an update to the public in regard to just some hot topics as of late for our district. The first is a media update, and I know that the board has been receiving feedback, as well as me personally, really from different media outlets, frustrated with the opportunity to speak about some instances, particularly at Diamond High School, as well as Tarmigan High School. And we've really tried to share, there's a real balance that we deal with in the school district in regard to the Family Education Rights Privacy Act, which our educators know as FERPA. And the community may be familiar with a health privacy law, HEPA, that's similar. Our employee and personnel, federal and state law, we have protections for our employees, as well as our students and families in regard to privacy. And then we balance that with the community's right to know. And these, all three asks, if you will, are in balance when we are asked to comment on specific items in the media. And we're doing our best to share the information we can as soon as we can, but sometimes it, we can't share information. And so we're trying to share that with the community in the different aspects for which we can. Recently, there's been some, you know, particular reports in regard to our staff, and we just want to share that we will continue to communicate that a behavior of one employee or one instance doesn't define us all, and we will continue to protect not only our students' rights, but also our employee personnel rights, which makes it difficult, I understand. In addition, that it actually is timely, this was prepared earlier, in regard to the testimony and feedback. We have taken testimony, and many questions that come up are truly site-based, because the sharing of the reality, how someone experiences, you know, a program or a new schedule, is really determine how that is put into play at their school. And so we've been supporting principals, supporting teachers, whether it's through coaches or other specialists in the district, to really visit and to see, how can we assist in troubleshooting? We're sensitive to the needs expressed and have a willingness to hear the concerns. Some solutions aren't so easy. You know, the one tonight, the middle school model, that, my understanding, is over really a six-year period. It's been really the primary reduction area, target area for reduction, first through specialists in music and art and those electives, and then next through the entire program. So some of the solutions aren't easily met without additional revenue, but we want to work with those decisions prior made, such as the scheduling that we had and asked the schools to revisit. We want to weigh in on the students' needs versus our availability to meet the requests of schedules and the like, and we really want to problem-solve the concerns to support our schools and teachers and students and families. And that's our commitment through this feedback, and it may have been, I'm not sure, in our, in an effort to ask to please visit, particularly, there was an instance where I heard of something in a second-grade classroom, and I just thought, well, that's not right. So asked for the principal to offer support, and if it was done in a way that made anyone feel uncomfortable, we certainly want to correct that, and I'll revisit that, such as I spoke to Tom Claymire this weekend. We also heard about start time, and just want to share that this was not, this wasn't a particular goal of the superintendent at all. It was a response to this school board, this prior school board, asking to address the situation. In 2016, I asked to put it off, that I think it was, this was bigger than we ever thought it could be, that this affects everyone, from our own employees and our own students to our community. So that if we really, truly wanted to do something to affect students and their health, that we would absolutely need to data-source this. Hence, it's taken a year to do. It was slow, particularly for a reason, because it's emotional to folks, because it affects us and how our schedules have been, the time we, the data in regard to the health benefits are, you know, sound, they're empirical, how they work in Alaska, we don't know. We can ask a few school districts, like Juno and Valdez and others that have changed their school start times, but none of them, as stated by Mr. Neese, is as large as our school district, or would cause such a disruption in the changes our school district. So our present school start times are high school 7:30, 8:15 and 9:00, and there isn't anything that really supports that 7:30 is the best time. In fact, the research actually does demonstrate that no child should start before 8:30. With our present situation and having to move a three-tier, an hour and a half, that was the solution provided. So through the year of studying it last year, the first seven scenarios that arose out of the focus groups were then brought to the community. And in those community open houses, where there wasn't a presentation, there was simply feedback. Which one do you like? Do you like them at all? Do you rather, you know, where are we? And the two ended up being the current plus 30 in elementary, high and middle school, were the most, out of the seven, that the community came back with supporting. And this was in small stakeholder groups, such as our after-school programs, before-school program group. We talked at the Chamber of Commerce. We spoke to teachers, but they're just in many small groups, as well as the community. Then what happened, the feedback from all of those areas at the school board meeting in June, there was another alternative posed. And to actually make a decision or not, we decided to take the information and then present it and then see what the feedback was, but we didn't feel as though we could ask for a vote, because the community had never seen this option. Hence, we did the additional three pieces out to the community, so that they would know what was on the table, because this was a suggestion by the school board at the June 4th meeting. In order to actually move forward and do something, we had to start somewhere. So this is not necessarily something that we may vote. Obviously, as we know in policy, we can adjust, we can go back to the one presented, we can go to the ones prior to. But it has been a long time coming. It started back in 2016 as a board item and an agenda for action, as well as a student petition, student and family petition. It wasn't just students, it was community members, some weren't students, who signed on to that. Hence, the board took it on to do a good job, to be comprehensive, to not make a rash decision. And now the opposite is actually occurring. We're taking too long, perhaps, or considering too much. So I just wanted to share that I think everyone, no matter whether it stays the same or changes, will just like to know, and we can weigh in with the experiences the board has had. But the goal was simply to present the board with as much information from the community as possible, because not everyone can attend a school board meeting, and not everyone has written an email. What we've done is go out to our community, the best we can, with over about 15 different meetings at this time, to share, to be absolutely transparent as much as possible. That is the goal, to be absolutely transparent. And the recommendation coming forward is to start, is to have a start, to have a decision. And what we did was take the recommendation during the school board meeting on June 4th to make that. Doesn't mean that it can't be adjusted through your own amendments. So I wanted to share publicly about that. This isn't, this was a charge that I was asked to do, and I feel as though taking the time to do it correctly and hearing our public is what was most essential, key part of this. Did want to share, I had just been recently asked in regard to mediation, and that will take place on October 18th and 19th, and it is a goal, a joint goal, to come to a resolution on a fair contract. At this point in time, you know, the board's had many conversations with individual members, as well as, you know, as a unit in the group, and the goal is truly to settle a contract. And there's a great distance between, I think it was a great idea to publicly share additional information from AEA president. That was the goal from the board from the get-go, with opening up and negotiations, make them absolutely public, share the information, hear what's out there. And the school board, you know, is living within its means presently, and that's the $15 million in additional funds have gone to this unit, but in today's day and with what's asked of public educators, it isn't enough to settle right now. So through mediation, we hope to come to a closer place. And that will take place on the October 18th and 19th. And then finally, the school calendar survey. Later today, there'll be some amendments brought to the school calendar, and just wanted to share that the school calendar, again, was prepared with employees, community members, business partnerships, I forgot to put students, had some share, as well as union leadership. And they came up with a plan, but of course, in any situation such as the school start time, because as board member Marsette mentioned at the assembly meeting, the feedback is about 50/50. There isn't one idea that we found that is actually, you know, the holy grail, that this is the real answer. Because we all are at different places in our lives, and our students are at different levels, we just, we come to it from different places. And I like to say that really where we sit each day has a lot to do with where we stand on an issue. And if you happen to be in an elementary school or happen to be at a middle or high, you have different experiences at that moment in time, so different pieces of information actually makes sense for you. I look forward to the, you know, the work that we can do on the calendar, and just wanted to share, there were some questions in regard to the survey, and how some of them sort of came out of the blue. And again, they weren't really to address any change- And again, they weren't really to address any changes, other than, is there truly an interest in this community to do things such as trimesters? That has been done, that came up, it actually came up in regard to the reductions made at middle schools, that other school districts have really worked with those changes and shortening of schedules and team time through such things as trimesters. And I'm just wanting to understand where our community was. Was this ubiquitous across our district that people wanted to really look into this or not? They were really about calendar choice, as well as topics to pursue. There was requests, time and time again, the board gets requests for year-round school. And then, we have folks that really say, never, we can't do year-round school in Alaska, that just wouldn't work here. So, for the board to be able, for us to say to the board, yes, these are suggestions, but this is where the majority of your feedback falls, is why we asked those questions. Not to engage in a change, but to provide the board the best information. And so, some of those topics weren't universally suggested. Certainly trimesters, as well as year-round school, did not favor well. One that did was working, which we're going to work forward in the future, is to have a late start time for schools, so that teachers have time to meet with each other in small groups to, it's not ideal, it's not, the middle school time, it's not the high school. Some of our high schools have an opportunity to do this now, but if we could shift all schools, so that all teachers have an opportunity to do that, that was of interest, actually in that survey. It came out favorably. So, that would be something that we would work with that committee again, to try to see where we are and how our community would like that, and then utilize that opportunity for employees to meet. Similar to, I think, we have about five to 10 schools doing that now on a late start, some version of that, charter and regular neighborhood schools. So, just wanted to share a little bit about that. If there's any interest, again, we can continue to do it that way, or just, I'm not sure of another way to garner that information for the board in regard to interest, other than just, you know, particulars. So, hence, we had a survey that had some of those questions on there, but they were a bit confusing as to why they were placed there. They were actually designed from this committee of ideas that came out of this committee of people to say, you know what, I've heard that some folks might like this. So, everybody came from a different stakeholder group, brought information, and then we queried the public about it, as well as our own employees and students, to see what they thought. So, without any more information, that is the update of hot topics in ASD, and I hope to assist in any additional questions you might have, and also to assist even, and continue to assist with tonight's testimony in regard to supporting teachers in classrooms and schools. Thank you.
Do any board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Holloman?
I will do a quick one. I do think it's an important distinction, that the board initiated the whole question about looking at school start times, not the administration. And the board also made it clear that it was not to be a trivial look or a casual look, it was to be in-depth. I'll say, as a board member, I haven't felt pushed one way or the other. Obviously, we have to vote and decide, but in no time have I gotten the feeling that the administration has an agenda that they want to vote on. And I think a lot of the emails we're getting suggests that people in the public feel that way, that the superintendents thought up something, and we're going to go along with it. It really has not felt that way at all. We've asked for different ideas, they've been brought to us, but we have the vote to make on that, and it's going to be up to us. Not your fault, I guess is what I'm saying.
Are there any other comments, or, yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, the board initiated it as a response to a petition we received from students. So, there were thousands of student signatures, asking us to take a look at it, so I agree, we took the responsibility to go forward with it, but we were reacting to a request from our students.
If there's no other comments or questions, Emily, do you have a report for us?
Our first student advisory board meeting was on September 11th, and we sort of just got together, welcomed any new people, and then we'll be holding elections for our executive board at the next meeting, which is October 23rd.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, this is where, well, first of all, I don't, we haven't had, yes, we have had meetings. So, communications, Ms. Mitchell, would you like to talk about that?
The communications committee met on September 19th at 8:30 in the morning, and we talked about our legislative priorities and came up with a preliminary direction that we wanted to go in under the umbrella of base student allocation. We're looking at safety, CTE, bond debt reimbursement, and again, BS, the BSA is the overarching theme there, preschool, a couple of other things. We also looked at the AASB resolutions that they had requested that we review, and we'll be looking at those with the first reading tonight. We discussed for community council meetings, how to best create materials that we can share with the community, but that don't tax the administration, because they have pretty lean resources that they're working with, and how we can just keep them updated on hot topics. And also, sharing with them, you know, I think we are all focused on trying to share some real anecdotal stories this year in general, that kind of talk to what's going on in our schools. And then, I think that was it. Is there anything anybody wants to add? And our next meeting is going to be on October 17th at 8:30 in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hildy, governance?
Let's see where we're at. I was just looking at my notes. We talked about a negotiations policy amendment that'll be on, or I think, non-action items today, just on when negotiations should start. I'd just like to thank you, I thought that was a really great process of going through that draft revision, so I really like when that works well. We're also waiting to hear back from maybe administrative reports, some principals sharing on what we do for our patriotic observances board policy, so just an update on that, and whether any proposed revisions we'll go forward with or not. We had one on talking about our work session and committee meeting rules, whether we're following Robert's rules or informal board discussion, just making sure our policy is, our actions are fitting our policy, and then implementing, make sure we're following our policy to do annual review of our policies. So, and our next meeting is October 17th at 9:30.
Thank you. Ms. Snelling?
All right, the finance committee met this afternoon, and we got an update on the CAFR from Jim and Melissa, and they're about two months ahead of time, doing a fantastic job this year, so it'll be out on time, should be hopefully presented to the board by the 5th, but that's not firm yet. And then, we had a quick discussion amongst the finance committee about legislative priorities, and just making sure we covered all the topics that we want to go down and talk with all the legislators about, stuff like that. Our next meeting is scheduled for 10:22, October 22nd, from 2:30 to 3:30.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to move into our non-action, is it non?
Consent.
Consent, sorry. And at this time, I'm going to read a statement for any testimony on our...
Would you like to read that?
Yeah, we'll do the consent first, then we'll, yeah.
And if you need to read that, I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 013, personnel report, the August 20th, 2018 executive session and work session, and regular session minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, if the board would vote, please. If our student representative can give us a vocal, a verbal, yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that motion carries six yays and one not present.
Okay, I move to approve the expulsion of the student associated with ASD incident number 1267340, as discussed in the executive session.
Do we have a second? And our vote from our, oh, not for, you're right, okay. I'm going to file a disclaimer, I'm running a fever. If the board would vote, please. And that motion passes with six yays and one not present. Is that everything? Okay. Right. So, at this time, we're going to move into our action items, and the procedure for agenda items testimony as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president, and if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate your interest in providing testimony, I will call you to come up to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote, before finally calling on the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen. Thank you.
Okay, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 023, and adopt a resolution recognizing October 2018 as Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, ADHD Awareness Month.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, do we have any public testimony? Okay, any board discussion? All right, please vote. Emily, I got to get used to you being here. If you could give us your vote, please.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that motion carries with six yays and one not present.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 037, to approve and adopt the attached school calendars for the 2019-2020, 2020 through 2021, and 2021 through 2022 school years.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public testimony on the calendar? Okay, do we have any discussion by board members? Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, I move to amend the motion, and members have before them alternative calendars for the three years. So, I first moved to amend the motion to adopt the alternative calendars and replace, as a replacement to the proposed calendars in the main motion.
Do we have a second? Oh, well, let's give board members a chance to take a look at it. Yeah? And we can go ahead and second that for purpose of discussion. Would anyone like to second it, so we can discuss it? Okay, thank you.
Madam President, since it's been seconded, may I speak to the amendment?
Yes, you may.
This would shift the spring break back, and also the professional development days in February forward. This year, last year and the year before, the professional development days and the teacher conference days fell on the first week of for rendezvous, which provided, so the Friday became a day off for our students, as it was a professional development day, which is a big deal. When I was a kid growing up, we always got the Friday of for rendezvous, first day off. It was just what we did, and it's the first day of the dog sled races, and so it was great timing, a good day to have a professional development day and let the kids go to the dog sled races. And we've had that this way for the last three years, but the proposal before us tonight, the main motion, would change that, so that the kids would no longer get the first Friday of for rendezvous off, and that shifts the time of the professional development day and the teacher conference days to earlier in the month. So, this would shift it back to the way it is this year, where it would fall on that week, the first week of for rendezvous, so that the Friday, they would get a day off. It also moves back the proposal for spring break by about a week. And in the last three years, the spring break has occurred about a week after, not the immediate week after, but two weeks after the start of Iditarod. So, that the prior holiday, the holiday before, if parents wanted to utilize that, they would have about a seven or eight-day break, without having to miss the Iditarod start. But these three proposed calendars all conflict with the Iditarod start, by saying that parents would have to either choose, if they wanted to take a vacation that spring break, if you wanted to go a couple of days early and utilize the weekend before the spring break, you would miss the start of Iditarod. So, this would just shift it back one more week, so that it wouldn't conflict with the start of Iditarod. And that's what it does. And I think these are two really culturally significant things to the Anchorage community. I don't think that kids, you know, as long as we're going to have a professional development day within a couple of weeks of for rendezvous, we should keep it the way it is this year and last year and the year before, where we'd have that day off for kids. And that we shouldn't put parents in a situation of choosing between going to the start of Iditarod or starting your vacation a couple of days early. So, I think this would be much more convenient for families, and allow people to take advantage of for rendezvous and Iditarod, and still have the opportunity to get away a few days early for spring break.
Mr. Donnelly, could I ask a clarification on your amendment? Are you including all three of these? Or are you addressing each one separate?
I'm just going to move all three of them, because they're all very consistent. It's all the same exact shift for each one of these years to incorporate those changes that I just described.
Okay.
There is one other factor here, and that's the length of the quarters. So, at the recommendation of the administration, this amendment also includes shifting the quarters back the start of the fourth quarter, but as we know, the fourth quarter is multiple days longer than any of our other quarters, so this would actually balance out the quarters.
So, if you could provide exact language to, right. Can we do that? Okay, all right. Do we need to take a, well, we're just, is there any other discussion? Mrs. Mitchell?
Yeah, the one concern that I have with this is that having that spring break off cycle with UAA is, to me, a little problematic, just because we have our students who are in the Alaska Middle College School who attend UAA, so that could be a little bit of an issue there.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Hildy?
Well, it wouldn't be, I guess, on member Donnelly's amendment, it would be on the original motion regarding Thanksgiving break, so, but if we have... His first, right? Yeah, so, okay, so then we would amend his amendment. Okay, thank you.
So, each of your board members have the amendment on your screen there, and it's actually up on the big screen, if you want to take...
It runs it all together.
Mr. Holloman?
And I'm just trying to come up to speed, but is the only change in here moving spring break week and that one professional day when it happens?
Yes, Mr. Donnelly.
And there would also be a shift of the two parent-teacher conference days, but also move with the professional development day, so they would occur before the professional development day. As they do in the main motion before us.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
Do we have the original recommendation that we can compare this to? Is that online somewhere, Katie?
Yeah, it's posted on there, so you can take a look at it.
And point of information to the chair, do we have someone that worked with the calendar committee that can speak to whether or not this was considered?
Okay. Ms. Dr. Bishop, if you could recommend someone?
Yes, my understanding is that Mr. Hess was representing the state regulations, and Jenny Knutson and Kirsten Johnson Strumpler were on the committee and can speak to the instructional side of it. Is that true, Mr. Hess?
Ms. Knutson was on the committee. Ms. Johnson Strumpler was in conversations related to some of the questions the committee had, yes.
Sure, okay. If you could come forward and... The one thing about evening out the quarters, you heard testimony tonight about testing. There's testing during that last one, that's why it was longer. But it shouldn't make a difference because really, necessarily in quarters, but what we do need is to try to balance semesters. So quarters aren't as important as semesters because a lot of our secondary teachers teach a very succinct semester class in the first semester and second semester. Just to share that that's why that last one has a lot of extra days is because of the amount of testing, yeah, for state testing. But I'm gonna turn over any...they can answer your questions. Rather than talking, we'll just respond to questions because there are lots of different ideas that came up in the committee.
I have a...oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, was accommodating the schedules around for rendezvous and the Iditarod considered in the discussion? I've been on the calendar committee a couple of times before. I know they talk about a lot of things.
I'll have to defer to Mr. Hess about the for rendezvous. I can't recall about that. But around spring break, it was really aligning it and making sure it was consistent with UAA to make sure our students had the same spring break off, especially with the middle college.
So...I'm sorry. Mr. Hess, can you comment on that?
For rendezvous was considered by the committee, but there was not a tremendous amount of discussion focused on that.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I'm just curious, moving the parent-teacher conferences back two weeks like that, is that a concern? Do teachers really like to have those earlier in the semester so that they can, you know, discuss with parents if there are issues that need to be addressed? Or is that not a big concern?
That's been a discussion associated with Mr. Donnelly's proposal versus the original proposal that was put forward. At the secondary level, moving conferences earlier into our third quarter is beneficial in terms of catching students who are struggling earlier. I mean, in best practice, we would be communicating with parents all the way along. However, sometimes that parent conference time is kind of a wake-up call if there is a struggling student for a parent, and they do become engaged during that process. So there is a little bit of concern from the instructional side that moving conferences two weeks later might let some kids fall through the cracks. However, any communication we have with parents is...should be ongoing anyways. So that's something to weigh as a board.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
I mean, I guess I understand your desire, Dave, and I, you know, I get it. It's a big deal for kids. But on the other hand, having, especially for our Alaska Middle College School kids, to have them have a week...I mean, they're basically not gonna get... Well, I guess, I don't know how their spring break would work. Would they have the old spring break and have to be there when UAA is in? You know, do they take UAA's spring break in the...
I can answer that, Madam President. To the President, to Member Mitchell, it would depend where the students fall. Some of the middle college students are in high school courses for math and science, but because they pass the Accuplacer, they're in university side for their social sciences and English. So they would literally be in two separate systems, and they wouldn't have a complete off-spring break. Students who are all on the high school side, it wouldn't matter, and at least they'd get a spring break. Students who are all on the university side would, you know, have that spring break then when university was off. But there remain students who have a foot in each because of their work, and so they would then not have a solid week off. They would continue to have to do university and continue to have to. But we can get those numbers. The total amount that could be affected is about 250, but I'm not sure how many are in both. And we could get those data for you. It might be as small as under 10, or it might be as big as 80, I'm not sure.
But for those kids who are mainly in UAA classes, and if they have siblings who are younger, then the family's faced with trying to balance that, right?
Correct, that would be correct, yeah.
Is there any more comments or questions from the board? Anything? Mr. Donnelly, would you like to speak to your amendment before we take a vote?
Well, first of all, thanks to the board members for considering my proposal. I just think, growing up here, this was an important element in my youth, and it was a tradition in our community. And I actually, when I first ran for the school board, I said this was important to me, and I talked about it at forums as something I wanted to make sure happened. It just so happens, the last three years, it's been lined up that way. So that for rendezvous Friday is an end service day. And also, the spring break occurred back away from the Iditarod, so there wasn't a conflict with the Iditarod either. This is the first time it's been proposed in several, well, three or four years, at least to not be that way. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the concerns of the middle college folks, but it'd be interesting to know, you know, how many of those are actually impacted by it. And we're talking about 47,000 students versus several hundred at the most.
Right. Well, I think at this time, we need to move forward with the vote because I think there is a time... Several community members have expressed that they're planning vacations and everything else. And so I think it's important that we do go ahead and vote on this tonight. So what I would call for right now is a vote on Mr. Donnelly's amendment. And if we could have our school student run.
Yes.
That does not pass. We have four nays, two yays, and one not present. So at this time, we'll move back to the original motion. And do we need that to be reread, or does everybody... Okay. Oh, okay, Ms. Hildy.
Yeah, I mean, I just was...I'm a little concerned about the week long for Thanksgiving. And I thought originally that was draft A versus draft B. I know the numbers for absenteeism, and I think that's compelling. But it's a huge chunk of time for parents who aren't going out of town. That's still, you know, I know it's like 10%, or absent, but, you know, it's 90% more who maybe are just gonna be finding childcare. The impact on our parents, especially when they have Christmas break or winter break coming up right after it. It's two big chunks of time. So from an instructional component, I'm concerned. From a parent time, childcare, I'm concerned as well. So I don't know if anybody can speak to that.
Yes, Dr. Bishop, if you could request someone to speak on that, please.
Mr. Hess, could you speak to that? I do believe that there were two, and when they went out on the main survey, correct me, that I think there were a little bit more people that liked that. But again, not very many people, according to 47,000 people, to Member Donnelly's point, prior to that, actually commented. So could you comment on the three days for Thanksgiving?
Yes. The committee had an interest in attempting to try and reduce the impact of student and staff absenteeism during the Thanksgiving week. Those seem to be one of the most...one of the higher absence rates for both staff and students. The committee put out two drafts. There were over 7,000 responses, and approximately 60% of respondents favored the Thanksgiving week off and asked a separate question if they were satisfied with the current calendar structure with two days off for Thanksgiving. Somewhere in the neighborhood of the high 40s said that they were satisfied with that.
Yes. Yes, you may, Emily.
I'm wondering, because the first thing that I see when I look at the calendar that jumps out to me as a student is that the start date of school is a lot earlier. And I know as a student, like, the school year seems so long already. And the school year's starting earlier but ending on the same day, it makes it seem a lot longer, even though the Thanksgiving break would be longer. I think that it's hard to see it that way for students. And so maybe, instead of like the entire week, you could do like three days or something? I think, yeah.
So would any board members like to make an additional amendment to this? Mr. Holloman?
I'm gonna move to amend by saying we consider tonight the proposed 18-19 calendar. Or, I'm sorry, the 19-20 calendar. I assume the 18-19 calendar is already approved, or the proposed... I'm sorry, I did get these confused. I thought the week long at Thanksgiving was in the alternate suggestion. And so the amendment I have wouldn't make sense on this to begin with. So I have a lot of questions about it as well. And I did not realize what we were looking at tonight. Apologize.
So I can make a recommendation unless somebody else has an amendment they'd like to propose or not? Ms. Hildy?
All right, I'll do my best to get a good amendment in here. So I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed 2019-2020 academic calendar as is, except, as proposed, except that at Thanksgiving, it would be the 27th, 28th, and 29th off, with the 25th and 26th as instructional days. And then the school academic calendar would not start on the 12th, but on the 14th...nope, I have no idea when it would start. But three, two days later than what it says.
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
Well, it would move the teacher's first day to August 14th, and then it would for 2019-2020. And then it would move the students' first day to August 19th. Right. And can I make a comment, or is it too soon?
Let me ask for it. So at this point, it's been seconded, and it's open for discussion.
So my one concern about that is that we heard a lot this year, and I'd love to hear from the calendar committee again, that having school start on a Monday for the first day of school was really brutal, and that people really prefer a middle-of-the-week day to kind of ease back in, which I think is understandable. This puts us to, it moves it from a Wednesday, a Thursday start date, so the first week for students is only two days, to a Monday. So not a huge issue, but it is something that I heard people complain about this year.
I don't know, as a parent, I was just glad when it started. Emily, do you have a comment on having a full week or starting in the middle of the week as a student?
It definitely makes that first week of school feel really long, though I know especially in high school, those first couple of days are mostly just like meeting with teachers, going over syllabuses. There's not a lot of actual classwork that starts. And so, I mean, I would definitely bring it up to SAB further if this goes through. But I don't think that for high school, it's too big of a problem. For middle school and elementary school, I could see it being a larger problem.
So I can speak to that? Okay. Jenny?
Yeah, on the calendar committee, we did have discussion about that. And it was brought up by educators and staff that starting on Monday was a long week for students and staff. On the other hand, we did have community members that were part of the calendar committee that brought up the issue around childcare. So for folks who had younger kids, childcare was an issue about starting midweek and not being there a full week. So that was the discussion we had. And so we kind of came down on the fact of really starting midweek would allow students to have a shorter week and ease into it, and that would be more acceptable for educators and people in the schools as well.
Any other discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Holloman, and then Mr. Donnelly?
And I'm gonna say, while it is a complicated thing, I think I am of vote for what the committee brought forward. Having been on the committee, it's a large committee, and it tries to represent a lot of different facets of the community. The members are chosen to represent different groups. And every change is incredibly complex, and people spend a lot of time hammering this out. And there is no perfect solution to it. We'd all like for school to start sometime in late October, be done by February, but have like 200 days in there with a lot of professional development. It just can't happen. I'm gonna have to defer to a lot of people working on this to say that that week at Thanksgiving matters a lot. Moving it up has implications for hourly staff. They basically lose two days of summer, and a lot of them work other jobs in order to be able to do what they do with the district. But it is two days. But I'm gonna support the committee in what they brought forward.
Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I, the number one comment I've gotten from folks is that the school year just keeps creeping earlier and earlier into summer. And when I was a kid, we didn't, here in Anchorage, we didn't go to school till the end of August. And I realized, but there's all kinds of implications here. And Member Holloman's exactly right, it's very complex. There's all kinds of competing interests here. But we used to, you know, that was the time where we went to the state fair, and we went fishing, and we went hunting back then. And it's just, it seems like it just keeps creeping further and further. Now, I would like folks in the audience to understand something that I've learned about that, and that's to balance out the quarters and still break at Christmas when we do. That's one of the big drivers here. And it makes it really difficult to adjust this so that a later start would still have balanced quarters. So I totally recognize that. But it is the number one comment that I get from people I talk to is just, how did we get so far into August? And this moves it even further into August. So I am concerned about that.
Is there any other discussion, Ms. Hildy?
I think I'd like to withdraw my motion. I mean, I am very concerned about the Thanksgiving start time, but me coming up with something on the fly, I don't think is respectful to the committee that worked so hard. So I'm not sure I'll support the proposed one, but I don't think my motion is fully fleshed out to be voted on.
Okay, so Ms. Hildy is removing her amendment to the motion. Is there any other discussion on the first... Is there any other discussion on the first, on the motion on passing the calendar? If not, we'll move into voting. Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, no.
I'm just going to throw, I guess, my comments out to the board. I, you know, much like Member Hildy, I am struggling with this week for Thanksgiving. It's not out of disrespect for what the committee has done. It is when I take a look at this whole thing, I'm going to have some disengaged kids for the balance of second quarter that are not going to come back after a week and, you know, be all happy, ready for Christmas, and be really thoroughly engaged. And fourth quarter continues to be a drain on kids when you have that much straight time on through. And I see the looks on teachers' faces when I go pick up my kids. And so I just, I worry about the, you know, the imbalance. And so, as it is right now, I can't support it, but I'm just one vote. I wish we could see it a little bit differently. If I understand right, we're voting on the whole motion, which is all three years as it stands, and that's a big cultural shift. And so we better be darn sure that's, you know, where the board wants to go for three years.
What we can do is if somebody would like to do an amendment, just to vote on the first calendar, and then have more discussion, and we can vote on the additional two calendars at another meeting. Well, you were first, Ms. Mitchell.
I was, I was going to propose exactly that. I move that we vote on the most immediate concern, which is the 19-20 calendar, and then we could have a little further discussion, if you guys don't mind, on the following two years.
Mr. Donnelly?
I was going to raise a point of order.
Yes, sir.
It's within the chair's prerogative, if there's a request. This is similar to just a request to divide the motion. There's three separate proposals here that have been combined. And if the body wishes to, you can just divide them. It doesn't take an amendment to do that. So I would just request that the, the motion be divided into the three segments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. I will take that point of order and move that we divide these three motions and just vote on the first one. Is the board in agreement? Okay? No, you don't need a motion for them. Right. So at this time, I'm going to call for a vote. If our student rep would vote, please, verbal. It's always for the 19-20 calendar.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
The display is not consistent with the actual motion before us. The motion before us is to adopt the proposed 2019-2020 calendar. And 2020-21, and 2021-22.
We are just doing one year. If you look down at the bottom, that's memorandum at the top, but the motion is at the bottom, which it says, "It's the administration's recommendation that the school board approve and adopt attached school calendars for the 2019-2020 school year."
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Madam Chair.
So that does not pass, because if we have a tied vote, the vote does not pass. And we have three ayes and three nays.
So we're back to tabling it until the next meeting, and I hope that we all get our questions out between now and then, so that we don't come back and do this again.
And I'm going to say, as a, I agree with you, Ms. Nellie, and I'm going to say, as a board, there are a lot of people that were counting us to pass a calendar this, at this meeting, and I hope that all of our board members do their due diligence in looking at this calendar and not waiting until the meeting to ask their questions. So if we could just make sure that we're prepared at the next meeting.
I'd also just make a friendly request that if there are board members that want to make motions to amend or anything, that we get it ahead of time so we can look at it, so that we're not getting it right at the meeting.
Right.
He did, he did do it ahead of time.
That's why I didn't see it, so it gives it, a hard time to process on the fly, like.
Yeah, and Katie sends those out all via email, so you should be receiving it in your box. If you are not receiving emails from Katie, then you need to let her know. I mean, you wouldn't know if you're not receiving it, but if you, if, she sends out a lot of emails, so if you're not getting any, there's probably a problem.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and I did give notice at the last meeting that I intended to propose those amendments, too. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we, as a board, we need to do our due diligence, and I'm not reprimanding anyway, I'm just saying that as a board, we, we need to make sure that we're prepared when we come to these meetings. So what we have next is our non-action items. And at this time, I would ask the board if they would like to pull any of these action items. Mr. Donnelly?
Madam Chair, for discussion purposes, I'd like to pull the memorandum 021. And I'd like to also, for discussion purposes, pull memorandum 040. And I'd also like to pull memorandum number 041.
Are there any other memorandums that board members like to pull? I'd like to pull memorandum 038. Okay. At this time, we'll just start with the first one. And so memorandum 038, school start times. I just want to make sure we have talked about this and talked about this, but I just want to make sure that there's, this is our last time to really vet this and discuss this. And I just want to know if any board members have any comments or any questions, because at our next school board meeting, we will be voting on this. And we'll have seven members. Okay, well, I'll go first, then. What? Oh, by eight, no, sorry, they won't be voting on this. So I guess my, what I want to say on this, and we can certainly say it, at the, I'm just going to say that I'm not going to support changing early start times. And I have several reasons for doing that. And it's not that the, the, the support is not there for the brain development of students, but I have to look at the overall impact on our community and our students. And I don't think there's been enough research done on elementary students in this change. I don't think that we've been compared fairly to other school districts that meet our unique characteristics, such as more Title I, probably 50% more Title I, or we just have a low Title I social, low socioeconomic population. And anytime you make a change to anything, you have to think about the impact on the families. And if it's an impact on the families, it's going to be an impact on the, on the education of the students. And so I'm just going to save suspense and say that I will not be supporting this. And if any members want to share any information, that will be fine. Otherwise, we can close this out and go to the next one. Ms. Mitchell?
So I, this is really tough, because I feel very, very strongly that the evidence is compelling, that it, it benefits high school students. And I, I think that if there's something we can do that is virtually no cost, and I'm not saying it's not going to be a huge adjustment for people, but other communities have, it's, if, once we get through the adjustment, it'll be the new normal. But it is, what we're proposing, I would like to be able to impact high school students more than a half hour. One thing, though, that I have heard is that there was some kind of numbers pulled together, and I've talked to a couple people here today. I just found out about this yesterday afternoon, that there were some, there was some research done on our high schools that have a late start time on Mondays for the purpose of, of team meetings within the building, and that in those schools, here in the ASD, truancy went down those days, discipline issues went down, and it would be interesting, I mean, I don't know if we can do anything scientific, but it, you know, it would be interesting to see if test scores went up. I have read anecdotal, you know, Juno did it, where else in Alaska? Valdez has done it. They, they have been thrilled with the results. And I've heard people say that their students, one, one parent told me that their student who I think goes to East said that Mondays, when they have a late start, she feels like she, she wishes all her tests were on Mondays, because she feels like her brain is engaged on Mondays. So I feel that it would be, I, I just don't feel like I can in good conscience not make a change, but I wish I could impact the high school students more, and I understand all the limitations in terms of childcare and that type of thing. But I think having that information, if we can pull it on the late start times, how it, how it did play out in our other schools could help inform our decision.
Ms. Hildy?
Thank you, and I appreciate your concern for the community members, because that's certainly what our kids are, you know, that's their families, and that's going to have a direct impact on them. But I do think that the research is clear, and that there is a real need for a certain segment of our student population that is not succeeding in schools. And we can see it not, not just in test scores, you don't have to look at that, you can just look around, you can see it through OCS, through foster care rates, you can see it through opiate use, you can see it through incarceration rates. So our job is to make sure students have the opportunity to learn. We don't get to choose what happens at home, we don't get to control that. But we have an opportunity to improve learning for not just high schoolers, because I really believe it addresses elementary needs as well. 2:00 PM, I mean, little ones are tired by 2:00 PM. You know, there are young children starting school 8:00, 8:15 in our district already, so it's not something that's not possible. They're up earlier, their little bodies are ready to go, 6:15 every morning, I know. So I would be very disappointed if we didn't take the opportunity to help our students find success in schools. And we have, we can't guarantee that this would work, but we have a lot of reasons to believe that there would be positive effects for children. And, and that's why I'm here.
Mr. Holloman?
I'm leaning towards no change, but I do want to say to the audience and any in the public that's listening, we're still listening and still trying to, to understand how this impacts families. Yeah, if we were really going to accommodate students, I think we'd start Tuesday afternoon, we'd be done by Thursday, et cetera, et cetera. Part of that opportunity to learn is the ability to use school to advance themselves as dramatically as they can. And, and I think for a lot of our most successful students, and it is looking at a different group of kids, the ability to get in early and get out early is key to them managing their lives the way they do. I hope, down the road, we can find a way to sort of spread school out to where possibly kids that really can't make it in the morning, and there are some, can come later, and, and that there's stuff to do later, that gets into the budget, and we have a budget issue that we don't know how to solve right now. But, but the other word is, I do hope people continue to write to us and tell people they're concerned about it to write to us, so that we do get as much input from the community as possible. I'm not 100% decided at this point.
So what I can share also is, it's not that I don't believe this is a good thing. At this time, I don't believe this is the right time. And part of that is because of what's going on in our district, and there's been so many changes. This is going to provide another change in our district that I don't think we're ready for. The other thing that I would like to see, if we could do our busing different, I think that down the road, we could actually even look at something differently to, we're looking at extending our school day, so how is that going to impact with changing our start times? I, I just think there's more that we need to look at, and we need to take a closer look at this. And the research that I've done, I, I've read all the research on the high school students, but what I haven't seen is any research on the elementary students.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate the remarks by Member Holloman. You know, whether the board votes to change the start times or not, I think it's been a very, very worthwhile process. I've just learned a tremendous amount of really important information on this issue. And so, you know, if it was, if there is a decision not to change the times, I don't consider that a failure at all. I think it's been a very healthy public process, where we, it was, it was the right time to explore this issue. It may not be the right time to move forward with this change, but I think it was very, very useful. And, and I also am leaning against it at this time, but I'm going to reserve my judgment until I hear all the public testimony at the meeting, you know, because that'll be the last shot at it for the public. And I want to keep an open mind and, and hear that testimony on the night that we actually vote on it.
Ms. Nellie, would you like to comment?
Sure, I've known, you know, where I've stood on this for a little while. And as it stands right now, and after everything that I've read and heard, you know, as it stands right now, unless something comes up in the next two weeks, I am against this change. I think that there are some other bigger issues that we need to do, you know, as a community and a society to, you know, help our kids besides this type of a massive change right now. I applaud the administration for doing what the board had asked, even when there's, you know, been a lot of other things that have needed to be done. And so I guess my request to the board again, same as the last one, do what we need to do over the next two weeks, make sure we come back ready to have a vote, because we've got so many other things we have got to get working on, and this has taken up so much time and resource. And so I'm just ready to, if we could just vote tonight and have it done, I think we're kind of there, so, yep, two weeks.
Ms. Hildy?
I'd just like to, you know, draw attention to the amount of time and energy put into this process, and that this is the opportunity to address it. You know, there has been money spent, there has been time, people's time and energy invested in this. It takes a bit of courage to have people get mad at you, but I promise, they will be mad no matter what we decide. So you are free to do what's best for kids, and I, we have compelling evidence that, that says there are changes we can make that will positively impact students in ASD. Not just, not just kids who are struggling, or just kids in elementary school, but whenever any of our students succeed, everybody benefits, not just students, but the whole community. So this is a benefit for everyone.
And I would just say that I definitely don't, I do appreciate all the work that's been in, that's been put into this, and like Mr. Holloman said, and, and Mr. Donnelly said, that this has definitely opened our eyes, and we've learned a lot through this process. But I think if any of us were worried about people being mad up, mad at us, we wouldn't be up here. So, you know, I think each board member has to vote what they feel is best for students in, in the school district, but I appreciate your comments, Ms. Nellie. Okay, the next one, are we ready to move on? Okay. The next one is memorandum 021. Mr. Donnelly, you pulled this?
Thank you, Madam President. The state of Alaska, and I helped write that law, has a, or at least I worked on it, a bidder preference law that gives a preference to Alaskan corporations when they bid on projects put out the contract by the state. And I was just wondering if the school district has any kind of Alaskan bidder preference that would apply to Alaskan artists applying for these kind of projects? We're dealing, just so the public knows what we're talking about, we're talking about 1% for art programs in our schools, and there's a, there's an advisory memorandum here. The school board really doesn't get to vote no on this, but, I mean, we don't control this, but it's more of an advisory memorandum is my understanding of it.
Madam President, may I call up Dave Whiting? He's over there, if you could make a comment. The question was in regard to 1% for art, artists with bidder preference. If you could please share the information that you know? And Dave Whiting is our procurement director extraordinaire.
All right, there we go, thank you. Through the board president, in this case, this is a municipal committee that selects the 1% for art. It is not a district procurement.
It is not a district procurement. So I don't believe, I don't know if there is a, any preference for local artists within the municipal process. But the Anchorage School Districts ourself, we have a local preference in some procurements that we do.
So, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that information. I'd be really interested in knowing whether there is an Alaskan artist bidder preference that the municipality utilizes in this process. If there isn't, I think I'd at some point propose a resolution that the board requests there be one. Because, I'll give you an example. There's one project in here where a significant part of the budget is paying the artists to come up here from outside, is his travel expenses and room and board while they come to Alaska to do this art project. And I just got to think that we've got local artists that are, you know, would love to get some of these jobs, you know, that could do them cheaper because they don't have to move here to do it, or that we don't have to pay their transportation costs up here to do these projects. So I'd really like, I think, the state bidder preference, and if we have an existing one, makes a lot of sense, especially on these kinds of contracts where they're going to end up, a significant portion of the contract is the transportation costs of an artist to come from outside, to come up to Alaska to do art in our schools.
Any other comments by the board? And maybe this is something that our, one of our committees could take up, either maybe governments, governance even, if we want to write a resolution, or, I don't know if that's communications, or however we want to do that.
I'm happy to put it on the communications agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donnelly, with that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So if, so we don't, we're not going to be actually voting on any of these today, right? Because they're just, they're on the...
Information only.
Information only, yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Thank you, Mr. Roth, for your expertise and your staff.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. So memorandum 040, adoption of the AASB resolutions. Mr. Donnelly, you pulled this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to give notice to board members of the resolutions, very similar to last year, and consistent with the testimony from Mr. Nice tonight, that I have a personal, as a member, concerns about, including opposing mandated school consolidation, opposing to mandatory borough formation, those are 1.1, 1.2, and 2.44, using, urging retention of the 10-student minimum for funding. And also 3.16, revised parental permission requirements to do away with the current state requirements protecting parents' rights. So I have a, I am not supportive of those particular ones that are being proposed, and so at the appropriate time, I would move, you know, for the board not to support those, and we can vote that up and down. But I just wanted to let people know those were ones I was concerned about today.
When is our deadline to respond to this?
October 8th.
October 8th, okay. Okay. And how soon did we send that out to everybody? Katie, to take a look at this?
We sent them out a couple of weeks ago, didn't we?
Okay. So...
October 8th is our next board meeting.
Right, and October 8th is our next board meeting. What, how do the other board members would like to proceed with this? Mr. Holloman.
I guess a point of information, are we, are we accepting these as resolutions of the ASD board also? Are we recommending to our voting delegates to the AASB to support these at their convention? I guess I'm a little confused in that I can understand AASB is probably going to adopt these regardless of what we say or do, but do we, do we adopt them also? It seems like we would not, normally.
Ms. Marshall.
So these were adopted by the AASB in November of 2017. They have sent them to us for review to see if there are any amendments we would like to make to them, or any new resolutions we'd like to introduce, or any resolutions we'd like to remove. So that's where we're at.
Ms. Nelling.
So one of the things, they have this, this big packet, and they do keep amending and approving, you know, every year, and that is part of what happens at the annual conference, is there is, you know, the resolutions committee and stuff like that, and we should all be going to that because this body does go down to Juno and speak on behalf of Alaska's kids. So instead of us adopting this entire packet as is, we should be offering amendments to it. If we want to offer an amendment to that one particular, you know, voting section, we should say, this is what we would like to see instead. That gets sent and that gets compiled. If we do nothing here, we can still make resolutions and resolution amendments from the floor when it comes time to vote for it in November.
And I think the bigger question here is, because this is an Alaska Association of School Boards, this is a board that represents all school districts, and even though we are not, I mean, we're not a small school district, and their needs would be different than ours, I mean, we have to take that into consideration. And maybe we need to have the bigger discussion. We've talked about having more representatives on this and having more of a vote, which has not been received well by AASB. Maybe we need to have further discussion with the board on the value of this association. So I would bring that into that, maybe we should have that discussion at one of our work sessions if board members are in agreement. Okay. All right, the last one, Mr. Donnelly, is revision to the school board policy on the negotiations consultation first reading.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended the Governance Committee meeting where this proposal was discussed, and I was under the impression, and speaking with the chair of the committee, she clarified what had happened. It was, I thought it was kind of confusing at the end of the meeting where we were at. And I do have some concerns with the language as it was provided to us in memorandum 041. And my specific concern is to delegate to an outside party with terms such, absolute terms such as "only" when the board could begin to request the negotiations begin. I mean, here, it's completely delegated to an outside party, and I think there ought to be an option for the board. It shouldn't, you shouldn't use words like "only." I think it's perfectly appropriate for an outside party to come, and I hope they do, and ask us to start negotiations, but I don't think we should have a policy that says that's the only time that we could initiate negotiations. So I'm just giving notice that this wasn't the way I thought it was getting worked out, and so I am concerned with that specific language.
Would the recommendation be to take this back to the...
Committee.
Committee?
Well, it's not an easy question. The committee was struggling with this, and for good reason. It's, there's conflicting interests here. There's certainly an appropriate interest that the bargaining units come to us and say, okay, you know, we want to start negotiating. But I also think that as a elected body, we should delegate all our authority to a bargaining unit to, you know, ask to begin negotiations.
Okay, is it, yes, Mr. Holloman?
As someone that sort of initiated this, if they don't show up and ask, we really have a lot of latitude in what we do. I'm pretty confident they will. The alternative would be that one of us would have to go find them, which is an awkward thing. So I can't imagine someone not coming. The whole purpose of this was to make sure that negotiations never began without the board being aware. And if there's a better way to do it, I'm all for it, but I think this is it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say, I agree with that. It's just, I think the language needs, would be better to be worked a little bit differently. But I agree with that goal, I think it's a good thing, we need to have a policy on this. Madam Chair, you've championed this, and I agree with your efforts here. I just think this particular language that came out of the committee is problematic.
If there's no contention, would the board be in favor of moving this back into committee for further review? Ms. Nelling.
I don't, but I think what he's, what I heard him say is that it was a, it's probably a whole board conversation, it doesn't sound like it got very far at committee, that's, but it did make it to a first reading here. It sounds like any suggestions to amend it if it's not being liked as it is, needs to come between now and the next meeting before the second reading.
Okay.
And that will still allow us to have the conversation with any possible amendments and not kick this backwards, but keep going it forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Ms. Nelling.
Ms. Hildy.
I have a problem with going back to committee. There wasn't a negative feel toward that, you know, making a second option, so I don't think more discussion wouldn't be fruitful. It wasn't like everybody was decided on one thing or another. So I think it could be fruitful to, if people wanted to go back to governance.
So we can move this forward and then make amendments to it, if people want to put their amendments to us earlier so we can look at those, or we can take it back to committee. Can I just, without an official vote, just a show of hands, who would like to take it back to committee? Mr. Oppo. Okay, so we're going to take it back to committee. All right, so we're ready to move into new business? Does anyone have any new business they'd like to bring up at this time? Yes, Dr. Bishop.
Madam President, thank you, and I regret that I didn't do this during my superintendent report, but we have two new members of staff here that, Mr. Roth and Mr. Hess, if you could please introduce your new team members, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the board president. I'm happy to introduce Ms. Ashley Lolly. Ashley is our Director of Security and Emergency Preparation. She has served our nation as an officer in the United States Army. She's coming to us from the Department of Corrections, and she clearly is passionate about security and emergency preparation, and we're very happy to have her join the team.
And Mr. Roth, she is replacing Joe Schmidt?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to introduce Megan Schmidt. She is the Senior Director of Human Resources Staffing and Operations. Ms. Schmidt comes to us from the private sector. She also has some school experience under her belt in human resources. She has worked as a consultant in the human resources field, and we're very pleased to have her on board with us.
Could you stand up? I think I see her. Would you mind standing up, Megan?
We have a new communications person that's filming. I don't know. Okay, he's in the back, hi, welcome. Okay, any other board members with new business? Okay. I have something that I would like to bring forward. There was a comment this evening about something that the district received with 3,000 signatures on it. As a board, I would like to see that, I guess, because this is the first I've heard of it, and I just want to know what we're receiving from our teachers, and that many signatures is quite a bit. So I'd like to have access to that as a board member. Any other new business? Okay. Yes, Mr. Don.
Is this our, this is not our general comment period, this is new business?
No, general comment period's coming up. Okay. So if there's no other new business, right now, we're looking, is there any other public testimony that would like to be given? Mr. Claymire?
Tom Claymire, AEA, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and express my apologies for some unfortunate wording that I had earlier. Unfortunately, becoming my dad, I think, and there are lots of colorful euphemisms bouncing around in my head, it's actually surprising that they haven't come out before now. Three of my former evaluators are here, they could probably attest that I'm not known in private circles for my filter. So anyways, it was unprofessional, and I apologize, and certainly not part of the professional discourse that we ought to have, especially as the spokesperson for our association. So on, to you, the superintendent, every present and the public and our members, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Claymire, we appreciate that. And is it...
Brad.
Brad, thank you, I was going to call you Ray, sorry.
It's all good, no worries. Thank you, Mrs. Marsette. I'll email you that link to the petition, to the school board, for the middle school petition. And I just wanted to take my time, three minutes here, to read comments from the public and educators that are under the petition. Having a team approach in middle school allows teachers to talk about strengths and weaknesses for our children, and allows interventions early on so that these hormonal, social, budding minds can grow with the best possible outcomes. As a parent and former middle school educator, I strongly believe that the middle school model is far superior to the junior high model for guiding and educating 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students. Another person writes, it's a fantastic thing for the teachers and students to have such a cohesive team to support through the middle school years. Another write, in my opinion, the legwork has already been done to accommodate this, why change now when our middle school kids need compassion, not stressed out, overworked, and underpaid teachers? Another write, I live in Matso, which is a district that got rid of the middle school model after building buildings to accommodate it. The 7th period day is not good for education, exclamation point. Another write, my children benefited from middle school model and greatly committed teachers. Another, I know the success of middle school team teaching, my child received lots of support and encouragement to achieve higher scores and critical thinking. Another writes, it is vital to have students be connected to their teachers and teacher be able to help those that need it most. Another, this is a critical and difficult age, and we need caring adults who have the time and ability to watch out for our kids. Junior high does not provide this time. I want my daughter at a middle school. Another, families and babies matter, and rushing children through an already broken educational system is wrong. We need to slow it down and stick to the middle school model. Another, I support my middle school teachers. Another, my middle school is important. It was working just fine, and you do not seek any meaningful input before making this rather large change. Another writes, I believe the benefits of the middle school model far outweigh the costs. Another, if you don't educate people, we can't grow. Due to the theft that corporate America has been doing to us for years, I say the large corporations should be legally required to fund all of education, including college tuition for everyone in the country. Pay your debt. Another, I'm a teacher in ASD, and I know these many short periods are counterproductive. Students need a team approach to learning. Another, I'm signing because my daughter has been directly affected by this change. She is in 8th grade. In 7th grade, her teachers were a team, they discussed all the kids and made sure all were engaged. The teachers were enthusiastic and encouraging. My daughter thrived as a parent. I truly felt the teachers were aware of my daughter's strengths and engaged her. Now my daughter is in 8th grade, she is just in week 3, and she says that school is different, and she is not as excited, nor are the other children. As a parent, I miss the team engagement, I am frustrated that my daughter's school career has been so drastically changed, and I feel powerless in making it better. I want teachers to feel supported, and with that, the students will feel supported.
Okay, thank you. Let me guess.
Yeah. Thank you, I'll just continue reading here for a bit, and I'll add some comments of my own. 7th and 8th graders need all the support they can get. Let's see, the teachers are the best. I support teachers and what's best for all of our children. I stand with teachers. I am signing because I have three grandsons in Anchorage, and support the middle school education model and want them to be able to have this educational model when they get to middle school. I no longer have a middle school student since my son has transitioned to high school. However, I am disappointed on behalf of middle school parents who were not consulted prior to this change in program and philosophy. My mother taught for 40 years, 1982 through 1997 with ASD. In the early '70s, she earned her master's in education studying middle schools in England. She talked about the child developmental reasons behind the approach.
schools in England. She talked about the child developmental reasons behind the approach. ASD spent time on studies and training before changing to the middle school system. We found the system beneficial in that the team of teachers effectively communicates with us about our son's skills and needs. He enjoyed the experiences of school-wide projects like Model UN, Mock Congress, and community projects. The middle school model fosters communication and cooperation skills. Middle school students need the protection and support brought with true middle school model, and teachers need the opportunity to collaborate for students' best interest." And I could go on. I'd like to just finish off with some remarks here. Apparently, my pitch of voice makes microphones turn off. This isn't fair. But I just want to commend the board and their decision to look at this middle school petition that was created. I had alluded earlier to the fact that sometimes we, as educators, do not feel listened to. And I heard that there were other concerns that were brought to this board today, and the reply back was that some of these concerns are site-based issues. I do plan on going back to my school. I was not aware that the fact that I lack a contract is a site-based issue. I would like to see from the other schools. I will get that data and get back to you and make sure that I'm correct when I say that that is not a site-based issue, and we do look forward to having a fair and reasonable contract. Thank you.
Thank you. You just can't get rid of us middle school teachers. We're not going away. I want to thank the board also for looking at our petition. Us middle school teachers are pretty sensitive right now, and I hope the board understands, we're not here to be obnoxious. We're here for our kids. And one of the things I'm qualified to teach, don't teach a lot these days, but is social studies. One of the purposes of history is to learn from its mistakes so we don't repeat it. Middle school's gone through this two years in a row where we haven't had communication from the district at large about changes that are happening. We went through this last year when all middle schools were changed to an eight-period day, and there was no explanation from the district. Teachers were the ones, I testified about this last year, sorry, but teachers were the ones that were at open house, trying to honestly, we're trying to make, come up with something to not sound like idiots to parents. I hate that. I talk a lot. I don't like sounding like an idiot. And then this year, again, I had to face parents at open house who have no clue that we've shifted models and what that means. It makes teachers look like the bad guys. That's what we're objecting to. If this was an actual decision to cut middle school because of X, Y, and Z, and it was presented that way before the start of school, I still wouldn't support it, but it would be a little easier to understand. It hasn't been that way. We're still explaining to parents what this means, and then we get put under the microscope, and I don't think that's fair, and it doesn't help our kids. So I would ask again that the district look at communication. I would ask again, I would repeat my request for a teacher advisory board. Listening to some of the discussions tonight was great, and I loved how we asked our student representative. That's awesome. It would have been awesome to also hear people ask teachers, especially when you're discussing that calendar. There's a lot of teacher concerns that I think aren't recognized, because not everybody has that background, and that's fine. Not everybody can be everything, but we need to have that voice. We're a huge district. We're a diverse district. We need to make sure we're hearing all voices. We have lots of administrative people. We're not getting that teacher voice. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Thomas. You're gonna hold on. My name is Jessica Thomas, and I work at Taku Elementary. Thank you for letting me speak. I wasn't planning on speaking, so hopefully I can say what I need to say without rambling or messing up too badly. I wanted to talk about the reading curriculum. I'm a third-grade teacher at Taku, and there's a lot going on with this reading program. And I've heard said that people aren't talking about how much time it takes to prepare a lesson for this. So I took my weekend, because that's when I plan my lessons, is on the weekend, because I need about that much time to get things ready. And I timed myself. I set a stopwatch up for everything I did. And just counting my time, not counting my teacher partner who is helping me grab e-visuals and stuff off of SendGage, we create a PowerPoint slide basically off of Google, so we can both work on it at the same time. And between the two of us, for this week, it took us five hours to just create our slides that we needed to be able to teach. And we create our slides that show us step-by-step how to go through the reading program and through our ELA lessons, because holding the book, the teacher's manual, the student book, the task cards, and our binder is too much for our two hands to be able to do while monitoring our students. And this is really sad, that we have to spend so much time trying to get this ready. That's not counting our copies that we have to go into school to make, which we generally do on the weekends as well. It's not counting doing our lesson plans. It's not counting any of the other subjects that we're supposed to be teaching. This is just for SendGage. And that's a lot of time just to spend on one subject for a week to try and prepare for it. And that's with two of us. So two of us spending five hours, that's 10 hours that we're spending a week, just creating the slides to be able to teach in a way that makes sense so that our students don't think we're idiots standing in front of them. Now, I wasn't able to go to the board meeting last time, but I did listen to it on YouTube, and I did appreciate Dr. Bishop talking about how the priority plans were, they weren't mandated. They were a guideline to be able to use to help us to be able to teach our lessons. And I was really excited about that, because I'm like, okay, this can make things so much easier in the classroom. I can make this work for me. I can use this curriculum. I can teach my students in a way that's gonna best suit them while still meeting the guidelines of the district. I was also informed this weekend that several, or that principals were told at their last principal meeting the same thing. And it was like, okay, great. I was super excited to hear from my principal. We have goal-setting meetings today and tomorrow. As a mentor, I was able to talk with my mentees at my school, who had their meeting today. I have mine tomorrow. And they were informed that, according to the ASD, that the initiative is still to be focused on the reading priority plans as well as the ELA priority plans. So therefore, that's what our school will do, too. This is frustrating for us as teachers, especially since other schools are being told that they can use it as a guideline to meet the needs of their students. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it's not being shared with everybody, and not all teachers are being given the same information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, Donna Purcella. Is there a timer? I don't see one. Okay. I am Donna Purcella, and I hadn't planned on testifying today either, but a few issues that have come up, and I don't know if I need to move to a different microphone, but a couple of issues that have come up during the discussion are important to me, so I thought I would address them. Couple of months ago, I sent an email to all of the school board members and to Dean of Bishop on the start times. I got no response. I don't know if it's because you get so many emails, and I can understand that. So I want to just reiterate in a public forum that I am absolutely against changing the start times. And my reasons are a little bit different than what yours may be, but I'm a grandparent, and I value family time at night. And with your current schedule, the middle school gets shafted again. I don't know if you hear this over and over and over again, but if you talk about the changes that have been made in this school district, the radical ones, they've all affected middle school. They keep getting shafted. And who's the one that gets shafted on this change of start times? It's the middle school, again. The kids don't get out until four. The teachers don't get out till 4:30. They stay for an after-school sport, and then they don't get out of the sport until six, don't get home till 6:30. So they're looking at a 7 o'clock dinnertime. The shambles that this puts for a family is just crazy. It's absolute crazy. The other thing I wanted to share with you was the data that you had online for this change in start times. I thought, well, maybe I'm a nurse by trade, and I thought, well, maybe I'm just not looking at the data. So I'm a scientist. I wanted to look at the data. So I went to your website online, because you said it was posted, and I listened to that whole presentation about melatonin and start times and 30-minute things. I can say from a scientist's viewpoint that that was not very good research, and that to infer in that data that if you start a high school or 30 minutes later that they're gonna win the high school football championship was really bad science. That data that you have online is just rotten data. Another thing that came up tonight was that Betty Davis is going to resign, if I understood that correctly. But then you also said that there would be somebody here for the next school board meeting to vote. So my concern is, is the public is just learning about this. If there's an open seat, that needs to be publicized, and those of us who would like to jump on the board get an opportunity to do so. Because if you've already pigeonholed somebody for that slot, that is not fair to the public. This is an elected position. The other thing about the calendar changes, you know, I was married to a teacher, and my kids qualified for the free lunch program because the salary was so crummy. And I gotta tell you that if you think that teachers can negotiate that time in the summer and have it shortened and shortened and shortened, you can't, because that is necessary income for them to have their second jobs to be able to support their families. Another quick thing, get rid of the dumb advisory period and put back the middle school model, and you'll make everybody happy. Thanks.
And I just want to clarify that I did make that comment about they would be at the next school board meeting, but I think I went back and said that was, I misquoted and that they won't be on board until October 22nd. There is a process for that. So at this time, we're gonna move into comments by school board and administration. Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Real quickly, we heard comments earlier that the school district was spending, should shift its money from Capturing Kids' Hearts and Lions Quest programs to somewhere else in the budget. My understanding from Capturing Kids' Hearts is in the current budget, none of those are general fund dollars. And the Lions Quest, I was under the impression that those were all grant dollars, too, and so they're not available to shift to other items or expenditures?
Through the president to member Donnelly, yes, the Lions Quest was purchased by the Lions for an international grant. Actually, they competed and won, not just an Alaska grant, but internationally. And our two-way monies are also for Capturing Kids' Hearts, so that was programmed for those developmental monies. Yes, you are correct.
Are there any other? Yes, Mr. Hallman?
Yes. I do want to say to everyone that came tonight, the practice of board members not responding, not smiling broadly, not cheering, has gone on for a long, long time, over a decade. It really is meant in order for you to own the time that you have to speak to us, and not feel like we're forming an opinion on the spot, not to feel like we are shifting depending on who's coming up. I know that it has the impact that you watch us sit here impassively, and you wonder if we're really listening, and I want to say we really are. And we really are trying not to make anyone feel ill at ease if they're promoting something unpopular. We're trying not to play favorites depending on how we may feel about something. But I know that it can feel very awkward, which goes to my other point, which is I did hear from several people that have posted publicly or were called into the principal's office because they were on the speaker's list. We see people come up to speak, and you can tell they're intimidated. People that normally spend the whole day talking freely in front of 40, 50 or large numbers of students feel intimidated. Parents that have absolutely nothing at stake with their job or anything else will be intimidated and have trouble talking to us as a group. So we don't have to do anything to intimidate people and discourage them from coming to speak to us. In fact, we have to, as a district, do the opposite and make certain that we promote that free and open exchange. Everyone that's worked in education knows that they're not gonna always be on the winning side of an argument or a discussion, but if you know that you can be heard, and you know that there aren't consequences for it, and you know that when the decision gets made, you're gonna go execute that decision, that leads to the kind of team feeling that even if the team's not moving in exactly the direction you want, you're still part of it, and you are going to do the very best you can based on that. I'm gonna say that you will have to really address this in ways that people can see, and I hope it's public, and I hope it's broad, so that people can say, no, the superintendent thinks you're doing the wrong thing when you take these steps. It's in our board policy. It's on the front page of the personnel policy that no one employed by ASD is to discourage anyone from talking to an elected official. Not your governor, not your senators, not your house members, not your school board members. And so anyone who's doing that, and calling someone in because they've signed up to testify is intimidation. I mean, no matter how nicely it's done, and even to use Philip Walters as an example, no one's gonna intimidate him. But 20 or 30 people at his school that know he got called into the principal's office because he was on the speaker's list are intimidated. And it has a chilling effect. It widens the divide that we are struggling to close right now, and I hope in two weeks that we see some things happen that show that we're reversing it. Because there is a long tradition in this district of people speaking up and being heard, and then we do whatever we have to do, but that happens. I also do want to say that the implementation of middle school was a very purposeful thing by the school board in the 1990s. It came with a lot of expense and money and training and activities. And then in 2005, I was on a school board task force as a relatively new person to middle school to determine if school board was, or I'm sorry, middle school was worth keeping. We won't take a vote on the other one tonight. Because that question had already come up. There had already been efforts to begin to defund it and dismantle it, and the question was, is it worth the extra money that we're spending? And that task force came back pretty strongly with, well, there are a number of board goals that we are not addressing in any other way other than middle school. And so if you're going, if we as a board were going to be attempting to satisfy our goals, we had to have it. Over the following decade, little bits and pieces went away, and mostly in terms of FTE. I think this year, it came down to the point where really it was put to schools of can you actually run it with the resources that you're given? And I think, I think most schools found out they really couldn't. We've seen kids go off team in math. We've seen kids graduate, we've seen teams basically kind of dissipate over the last couple of years in particular. And that really has sort of did it in, but then this year, obviously, it's crystal clear that it no longer is really a part of our structure. It's funding. We need the funds to put it back in. If we can get that, I don't think, it will be real hard to convince people to do it, but right now, we are struggling to make a reasonable contract offer and not lay people off in the spring and all kinds of other things. And it has had cuts that just had to be made. So I mainly wanted to make those main points, those main points. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from board, Ms. Mitchell?
So I just want to let people know, if you know anybody who is interested in service on school board, which is a fair, you know, it's a pretty big commitment. I believe those documents will be up in the next 48 hours.
They will be on the district website tomorrow, and it'll be posted in ADN on Wednesday.
So it is a-
And that's 14 days.
It is an open process. We do not have anybody in mind, and we'll see who applies, and hopefully we'll get some really wonderful applicants.
Ms. Nellie?
I just want to take a moment and express simple gratitude for everybody in this room as it's 10 o'clock. Some who, maybe you've seen your kids today. Maybe you haven't seen them since this morning at breakfast. Board, the administration, the community, the teachers, everybody. Just a simple thank you for being here to work for the betterment of children. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Nellie. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.
So I was going to ask you something. In terms of- In terms of what? Well, clearly, it's happening in a really significant way.